All right, good afternoon. I'd like to call our meeting into order. I'll turn to Board Member Winston McGregor.
I'd like to make a motion that we go in a closed session to protect attorney-client privilege and other matters related to personnel privacy, student assignment privacy.
Second.
Some of those words.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're now in closed session.[31.84]
All right, good evening and welcome. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'm going to turn to Board Member Linda Wellburn to open us up.
Would you all please stand for the pledge?
We will begin our meeting tonight with a public hearing on the consolidation of Guilford eLearning Virtual Academy K-5 and Guilford eLearning University Prep K-6 through 8. The deadline to sign up to speak was yesterday by noon. We did not receive any requests to share feedback. With that, is there any discussion before we make our vote?
I move that we open the hearing.
A second.
All right. Any conversation? Any questions?
Is anyone here?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
We didn't vote on opening it, but we can assume.
Oh, sorry. All right. I think, I think we're good. All right.
We just didn't open.
So at this time, we are at our recognitions, and it is hard to believe that this is the last official board meeting for our Superintendent Dr. Sharon Contreras. I had the absolute pleasure of attending and giving a tribute to the superintendent. Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. That's right. I'm sorry. So we voted on the discussion. We just didn't take the action on the issue that we didn't talk about, that we didn't have anything to talk about.
I move the aye.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consolidation of the virtual academies.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I moved it. I seconded, I guess.
Okay, so that Kim and Diane, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. So that has been approved. Now we are at our recognitions. Again, I had the absolute privilege, privilege of attending and giving a tribute to the superintendent at the recent Community Appreciation Thank You reception, and was joined by other amazing leaders such as Walker Sanders, Paul Lassard, leaders of our community foundations, Rabbi Andy Koren, Bishop Brian Pierce Senior, community faith leaders Jason Stricker, Dr. Ray Hart, and Dr. Todd Martin, leaders and advocates of public education. I thought I knew most everything about this phenomenal leader, but as I listened to these speakers, I learned a lot more. Dr. Hart, who serves as Executive Director of the Council of Great City Schools, told us about the superintendent's advocacy that drove the Council of the Great City Schools to divest in Wells Fargo because the bank was putting money into for-profit prisons. Dr. Todd Martin, Superintendent of Yadkin County Schools and Chair of the Piedmont Triad Education Consortium Superintendent's Roundtable, shared information about Dr. Contreras' leadership that provided a roadmap and resources that assisted small districts in North Carolina to successfully reopen their schools after the first wave of the pandemic. I can go on, but I think you get the context of just how impactful her gifts, talents, mindset, and desire to do what's right because it's the right thing to do has impacted our community and truly communities across the country. So how do we say thank you to a leader that is leaving us better than she found us? Her record of accomplishments is evidence enough that we, as a district, are better and stronger than we were six years ago. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we would present you with a token of our appreciation soon as it gets here. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what it reads unless Wanda tells me not to. Okay? I'm gonna tell you what the, what the, the thing you're gonna get says, okay? It says, "Thank you Superintendent Sharon Contreras for your leadership and service to Guilford County Schools from the Guilford County Board of Education, June 28, 2022." On behalf of the Guilford Schools family, we want to present you these two companion pieces. Here they come.
There we go.
Of art signed by some hundreds of people that attended the appreciation reception.
Y'all are like the Price is Right girls.
Yes. You can turn those around so everyone can see them. Thank you so much. We hope that you hang them proudly in your next office, knowing that your work in Guilford County Schools mattered, and you will be missed. Can we see your face? So like we do with people that we recognize, we'd like to give you a few minutes to say something, and then maybe take a, a little recess.
Oh, we need to, the camera can't see her. We gotta move the flowers to somewhere else.
So I would certainly like to thank the Board of Education and the entire community for your outpouring of love and support during the recent appreciation events. It was really overwhelming. Your expressions of gratitude confirm my confidence that the work we do together matters and that love abounds in Guilford County Schools. I just leave saying the same things I always say, and that is I implore us to work together on behalf of children even when it's difficult to do so. They are desperately in need of us. And you're gonna vote on an item later this, in the agenda about archiving our historical records. But last weekend, we were reading through the minutes in the 1870s, 1880s, 1890s, early 1900s. And they list their public comments, and people have been coming to the board meetings. And Greensboro had some of the first public schools in North Carolina, but people have been coming to board meetings for 147 years, asking for an equal education for their children, asking, "Please open schools for all children. Please support professional development." And they didn't call it professional development, but they said, "Teachers need training. The faith community has been active since the 1880s." Coming to the schools, coming to the school board meetings saying, "Please make sure all children have access to a public education." It's important that we realize that struggle continues today and that we are relentless in ensuring that every child has equal opportunity and equal access to programming, to great teachers, to great instruction. I'm so proud of the work we've done together as a board superintendent team. We passed the largest bond in North Carolina history. We've been able to make sure that teachers have professional development, significant professional development that is making a difference in the lives of our students. We see that our teacher and staff demographics are starting to align more closely to student demographics in the district. I can go on and on about what this extraordinary team, meaning our support staff, our teachers, our administrators, this board has done in the efforts to make sure the reality that started, or the efforts that started 147 years ago actually become a reality, and I will be here supporting you every step of the way. Thank you so much.
We are now at public comments, and you'll see that we will recess after our public comments and approval of the agenda to just spend a few moments with Dr. Contreras. So we're now at public comments. The first person on the list is Michael Logan. Just wanted to remind you that as you come to the podium, please give your name and address. You have three minutes to make your comments when you're just about finished. When you have 15 seconds left, an amber light will come on, and when a red light comes on, your time is up, and we ask you that you please end your comments. Next on the list is Dr. Jennifer Shaw. Yes, public comments? Are you speaking? You're on the list to speak. Yes, you can come to the podium. Oh, he was? Oh, is he here? Okay. I didn't even see you. I was looking for your hat, and I said, well, Mr. Logan's not here, but I see you. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Honorable members of the Guilford County School Board, our esteemed superintendent, and your excellent staff members. My name is Jennifer Shaw. My address is 7928 Bayfield Lane, Greensboro. I've lived and worked in Guilford County for 36 years, and I have two adult children who are graduates of Guilford County Schools. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Contreras for her years of service to Guilford County Schools. You have led us through the most difficult years of our lifetimes and have continued to enhance the well-being of our children of Guilford County. Although it is a great loss to Guilford County, our state is fortunate to be able to continue to be enhanced by your expertise in education. Thank you. As for the Board of Education, you have several large tasks in front of you. You were very successful in hiring Dr. Contreras, and I hope that you will find the same success in hiring our next superintendent. I hope it will again be a person who works hard for the benefit of all of our students, who will fight for the right of each and every one of them to learn about our great country, both the good and the dishonorable sides of our history, who will help guide our educators to do their best work in our schools, and who will make sure that every student has access to materials and books that speak to the history and contributions of others like them. In addition, you have before you the task of shepherding the school system through the renovation of all of our schools with that $1.7 billion that citizens have entrusted you with. As I said before when I spoke, I've been watching Guilford County Schools struggle with unequal facilities across the county for the entire time that I have lived here. And my children attended both well-resourced and poorly resourced schools. There is a plan in place to move conscientiously to improve our schools in order of need, and I hope that you will continue to honor that plan. In addition, I hope that you continue to be aware and emphasize the need for the contracts generated by our tax dollars to be used to uplift all citizens and businesses in Guilford County, but especially those that have been historically shut out of contracts and are now currently underutilized, those known as MWBE, Minority Women Business Underprizes, or HUB, Historically Underutilized Businesses. As always, thank you for your service to our community. May you continue to strive to enhance and improve the opportunities for all children in Guilford County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jashanta Brinson, followed by Sylvia Clapp White. Sylvia Clapp White, followed by Monica Walker. Welcome.
Greetings to the Chair, Dean Hayes Green, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Contreras, and Staff. I am Sylvia Clapp White. I reside at 603 Cardella Drive in Greensboro. Six years ago, I was excited to meet you, my Sora, and welcomed you to the city I've loved and returned to in 2014. As I stand here this evening, I am filled with mixed emotions. I'm excited once again for you, as you leave, to become the CEO of the Innovation Project, but I am incredibly sad that many of our students, especially the Black and Latino young women of color and new educators, will not have the opportunity to meet, be mentored by you, or even learn about you if our history is not taught. You came to us with a promise to put the needs of the district's students first, and you did. You met the goals that you laid out upon acceptance of your role as superintendent. You championed educational access for all students, provided new textbooks and digital devices along with their instructional materials. Academic outcomes continue to improve under your leadership. You also built support for teachers by offering teacher development. You worked to improve the district's facilities by forming a joint facilities committee between the Board of County Commissions and this board, which led to the passage of not one, but two bonds to build new school buildings. I read that you are widely respected throughout the country for your policy work to end racial disparities in education. I know that equity and inclusion have been especially important to you here as well. Unfortunately, you have had the support of some board members with the same goal for GCS. I was moved by the number of people in our community and surrounding area that came to celebrate you recently and the many affirmations they shared. One story that touched my heart was that you not only purchased books for incarcerated youth, but you spent time talking to them about what they've read. When they graduated high school while incarcerated, you and other administrators dressed in full regalia decorated the room, hired a small orchestra, and provided a commencement speaker. Thank you so much for showing them how much you care. Many blessings were bestowed upon you during your reign as superintendent, and I pray that God will continue to bless and keep you. I thank you for your courage, your strength, and especially for showing your faith. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Monica Walker, followed by the Honorable Jay Carlvina Foster. Sure.
Sorry about this. Good afternoon. Thank you all for your service and all the amazing work you've been doing for Guilford County. I am standing in for Monica Walker, but I'm also here to share my love as well for Dr. Contreras and everyone here on the board. From Monica Walker, it says, "Dr. Contreras, six years ago, members of the Guilford County School Board appointed you to be the leadership of the third-largest school board district in the state of North Carolina. You arrived with a wealth of experience and intellect, energy, commitment, and love for the education of children. You hit the ground running and immediately began to effect change, prioritizing what mattered and trimming off things that have not yielded the results that we anticipated. You were not shy about it. Your vision was not afraid to take bold steps towards improving education for all children in our schools. Of course, change comes with great difficulty for some people. The notion of equity is even more problematic for others because we have never had to think in terms of leveling the playing field and closing gaps in the ways that all students prosper. Yet you kept the conversation on the table. I'm so glad that you were built for the resist, for the resistance pushing back in the storm that came from the fractions in the community who tend to only think in terms of students at the top. You did not waver or falter from the tough work. You carried your vision forward, and we all are better for that. You led us through one of the most difficult challenges ever faced by educators, a pandemic that literally shut down schools. You helped your staff readjust away. They worked with students and weathered all the challenges and all the critiques. Unfortunately, some of these critiques came from people who were elected to support you and instead added to the fray. We are here to celebrate your victory today. You have made an incredible difference to the students in Guilford County. You are a rare, brilliant, exquisite pearl in the massive pool of educators. We celebrate you today in all of your exquisite gifts, talent, brilliance, hope, courage for this thing called education. We will miss you and simultaneously recognize how much larger a stage you was deserved and that deserves you. We wish you Godspeed. Monica Walker, representing the Black Pearl Society. I did not introduce myself. I'm Crystal Dixon. Address 1260 Westminster Drive, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you, Dr. Contreras, for your work. Love you, love you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. And that concludes our public speaking. I did get a text message from Vice Chair of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners, Carlvina Foster, unaware of the time of the meeting. So we are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. All right. Next on our agenda is just a brief recess, giving Board Members, Staff, and our guests time to greet and say whatever they would like to say to our superintendent. So we could take a 10-minute recess? All right? All right?
All right, we are back and we are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Contreras?
Thank you.
Did we approve the agenda?
Yes, we approved the agenda. Thank you. Good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the Board and members of the community. This evening's consent agenda includes the personnel report, the 2022-2025 academically-intellectually gifted plan, the contractual agreement for EC nursing services, the designation of official depositories and appointment of individual school treasurers for the 2022-2023 school year, activity bus replacement fee, the renewal of driver education services, the 2022-2023 insurance coverages, and the contractual agreement with Davenport-Lawrence. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Madam Chair, move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Anita?
No on A, yes on the rest.
Okay. Deborah?
Is there a moment for a question?
Yes.
I did have a question about the buses that we're looking at purchasing as part of the consent agenda, correct?
Do you want us, do you have extensive questions? Because we can pull that item.
Um, yes, please pull the item. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back and we're now just voting on A, B, C, D, F, G, and H. Is that correct?
And I will say yes to that.
Okay. Betty?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes to the consent agenda.
Winston?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. So A, C, D, F, G, and H passed by a vote of eight to zero. Oh, that's right, not H.
Seven to one.
Seven to one, thank you. I thought I had all this figured out. And then B passes by a vote of seven to one. Passes by a vote of seven to one, right? So that was A, D, K, W, L. Oh, I'm just reading our initials.
I thought everything except for A was unanimous.
Yes, right, yes.
So A is seven to one?
It was B and E, because we're pulling E right now, because Deborah Napper wants to talk about E. So it is A.
So A is seven, one, B, C, D, F, G, H is eight, zero.
B is, B and A.
B was pulled?
No, was A pulled, Anita? I mean, A you voted no on?
It was not pulled.
It wasn't pulled, but you voted no on A. So it was B through H without E that was passed. Okay, we got that. So now we are at the activity bus fee replacement. E, item E. Deborah?
I just wanted to know what exactly we are using as replacements for our buses. Are these our standard diesels? Are these any variety of hybrid or battery powered? What are we looking at?
So for our activity buses, we have historically purchased the standard diesel, whatever's on state contract. And if there are other things on state contract, they can be considered by our transportation department.
When would we know those details?
Well, the small amount that we're transferring this year is not a sufficient amount to purchase a bus. Typically, they're in the hundred, around the hundred thousand dollar range, so it'll have to accumulate for several years, this amount before we are able to purchase any buses.
Okay, so this is, you're saying replacement. So these will most likely be the diesel. Okay, I'll keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
Are we allowed to buy them on a multi-year contract?
No.
We can't make payments.
Activity buses are the only thing in statute that says we must use capital dollars to do that. And if we were to try to lease it, we'd have to go through the county commissioners for approval for debt and so.
But a regular bus, we can.
They're yellow school buses, we do, because the state statute was changed to allow DPI to purchase buses using that, the lease purchase option.
Move the item.
Thank, hold on, Diane?
This is just a bus question. Have you started seeing the electric buses on state contract yet, or is that too far out?
I'll have to get back to you with the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to that. I haven't looked at the state contract for buses in a bit. So I'll have to get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes by a vote of eight to zero. We're now at reports from the chair. Good evening and welcome. Parents, please be aware of two upcoming deadlines. The deadline to request reassignment to a school other than your districted school is July 1st, which is this Friday. Please note that students who are at their current schools on reassignment do not need to reapply. To submit a request, visit gcsnc-schoolment.net. Also, Friday is the deadline to request transportation for the upcoming school year. Families must request transportation if a student is new to the district, is a new bus rider, or has moved since last school year. Families new to GCS should look for a new prompt on the preference form that will allow them to register for transportation without a student ID number. You can find the transportation request form on our website at www.gcsnc.com. Students who received transportation for the 21-22 school year and whose addresses remain the same for the 22-23 school year, 2023 school year, do not need to fill out a new transportation request form. Summer meal distribution is going on at 22 school locations and several more community sites, a map of which can be found on our website. These meals are for any child under the age of 18 and must be consumed onsite. They are available Monday through Thursday from eight to nine and from 11 to noon. Also, please be reminded that the federal waivers that allow districts to serve meals to all students for free will be expiring this summer. Families are encouraged to fill out the free or reduced price meal application after July 1 at lunchapplication.com to qualify for meal benefits next year. The application is available in English and Spanish. And finally, just a reminder that the district will be closed next week for the July 4th holiday, and this concludes my remarks. We are now at item B, and that is a report, a transition report from Dr. Contreras.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I'd like to say good evening again and congratulations to the GCS communications team for receiving 17 awards from the National School Public Relations Association, including four awards of excellence and two Golding Achievement Awards. NSPRA is recognized as the premier leader in school communication in the country. The team will be recognized at the national conference in Chicago this summer. So congratulations, Dr. K, Wanda Edwards, and the entire team. Students, don't forget to keep reading this summer. Those who read at least 900 minutes and submit their reading logs will earn a free ticket from Kersey Valley for either the Corn Maze or Spooky Woods activity. Students who will be in kindergarten, 7th grade, or 12th grade next year are required by law to receive certain vaccinations, along with any student who will be enrolled in a North Carolina public school for the first time. Health assessments and immunizations will be available for free to those who do not have health insurance. Please call 336-641-6720, again, 336-641-6720, to learn more and to schedule an appointment. I am pleased to report that work is moving forward at three elementary schools that were included in the 2020 bond. The contents of Claxton and Faust Elementary Schools are being moved out to make way for abatement and demolition later this summer. And Peck Elementary is having mobile classrooms removed to make way for the site work. Please plan for a groundbreaking board members on August 3rd and the others on August, I'm sorry, is it? And 13th, the 8th and 13th for groundbreakings. We will continue to share updates on these and other projects with the community at www.gcsnc.com/bond2020. At this time, I'd just like to let the board know we're going to be presenting on several departments the transition plan and work. It's more the transition work, so you know some of the work that's ahead of you. So we'll talk about where we are as of today in these departments, and then talk about what the next steps are as you head into the start of the next school year. So my staff will be coming up by department to make their presentations, which you have in your board book. And then some of the items we cannot discuss in public. So we have a second closed session immediately following for some of the questions that are specific to safety, for example, or legal issues, and we'll go into closed session to discuss those. Okay, welcome, Dr. Oakley and team.
They do not have the printout of this PowerPoint. They don't, the board doesn't have this printout. So good evening and welcome. We're going to just kind of transition as we go through. Want to make sure that you know which areas we're going to highlight specifically where transition work is happening. They're listed here, and we'll start with transportation. And Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. So thank you, Board. We wanted to give you a brief overview of several of our operational departments. Where we stand today with some key initiatives that we are actually addressing as we go into the next school year. So you'll note here in the first slide, we're going to focus on transportation. The district has historically had a routing system that basically routed all of the students throughout the district. We use the state system, which was Edgelog historically. Under Dr. Contreras's leadership, when I came here in August, one of the first things that she identified as a concerning area was our routing and our efficiencies and where we could actually leverage an opportunity. So an RFP was posted for us to look at an alternative routing system. And luckily, we found one that really allows us to benefit from the increased capacity planning, safety hazard identification, as well as student support information that we can actually push into the system. Made it ahead of every single system that we were able to see during the RFP process. So we have been working with the Selective Vendor Bus Planner since February to revise our routing system. We will be in transition during the school year into the implementation of using Bus Planner with the finalization being by December. We're going to actually be working in two different systems to make sure that we are able to both route our students within Edgelog, but also parallel that within Bus Planner to make sure that we are not losing any children and we are able to benefit from both systems at the same time. Separately, as you know, we enacted as a part of the January issues that we saw with staff within transportation. In COVID, we actually created a private-public partnership with our transit agencies, both Greensboro Department of Transportation, as well as High Point Transit Authority. That partnership went on for quite a bit and actually still is in place, where students could benefit from the usage of public transit throughout both cities. We are looking to expand that opportunity with both entities, but also including our part, Pre-Pymont Authority Regional Transit, to ensure that we have all three transit authorities able to support our student populations if they so choose. One of the benefits of having public transit within our ability to use allows us to allow, you know, students that have internships or after-school programs or just want to take the bus because that's a mode of transportation that is allowed for them. This really gives them that flexibility to do outside of the yellow bus service that we offer as a district. So we're looking forward to continuing that and actually expanding that. So we're in talks with both GDOT and High Point Transit to look at opportunities for expansion of routes, bus stops, to service more areas within the community that need it. So with that, I'll transition to technology. Oh, absolutely.
One of the things that, you know, I don't know that we've ever gotten quite implemented 100% is the GPS on the buses. Okay, we've got a lot of subs, and when I'm, I've been behind a couple, and they've got those papers. It's, for me, it's not safe with GPS technology. We did have, we did purchase something, did we not?
We do. We have GPS technology on every single bus. That's actually how the bus drivers log into their routes.
And so, okay.
Oh, you're talking about the swipe cards.
No, I'm talking about the GPS systems where you should be able to load a route into this GPS, and then if you have a sub, they should be able to follow.
So we have the system. All of the applications, we did not take advantage of in the initial year. With us moving towards Bus Planner, one of the key things is to be able to push the routes through the system into the GPS tablet, if you will, and allow the bus personnel to both log into their route, put in a bus route number, and see their route in real time. So if something happens in the background, let's say a child is included or added, it's uploaded. There may be a 24-hour upload time, but it at least allows them to see that route guide throughout the whole, you know, transition. Like I said initially, it was not taken advantage of. We're looking forward to taking advantage of it this year.
Because, you know, that is one of the major complaints I hear on the busing is I've asked to be added multiple times, and I think part of it is the subs. They get added, but the sub doesn't know that they've been added, and therefore they just pass them right on by again. So I just think that's a critical piece to making us more efficient in getting our kids to school.
Absolutely.
Because I'm a GPS-dependent individual.
Absolutely. I think it's also good to note that the system is as good as the information that we have. And so we encourage parents and schools to make sure that we're pushing the information into the system so that we can route people within the 48-hour or however many hours we need to make sure that the system keeps up with the transitions that is happening in the field.
Just to add though, that the GPS also does use the swipe card. It's the same technology we're using for the swipe card, so.
Right. I wanted to make that clear, that they go together. And there is a cultural change as well with making sure that bus drivers actually ask the students to swipe, because not every bus driver has done that, and it takes time. But this has been sort of the year where we have piloted it. It was stronger than a pilot. But I think next year, certainly Mrs. Reed and staff will push even harder to make certain that those, every student swipes that card when they get on the bus, or we don't know they're on the bus. Do you understand?
Correct. It helps with both emergency management, but also making sure that we know where our students are at every time.
Thank you. Diane, and then Kim?
Do you know off the top of your head how many, how many miles we have to cover for Guilford County?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
But Guilford County is like.
644 square miles.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Fifty-four.
Okay. So, and I think that's important for people to understand that we actually are the largest bus system in Guilford County. We're larger than the public bus system. Then my next question has to do with Part. I know what Part is, and I'm excited to see you using them. But will we be able to get Part to reach areas where we don't have our city transportation?
Yeah. I think that's something that we don't know at this point. We're in the infancy stages of conversation as far as the contract, because they were not involved in the initial conversations. But we're hopeful that their, you know, transitions and conversations with them will progress the same way they are with the other two authorities.
I don't, I know we don't have time for you to go into a lot of detail, but one of the things I remember when I first came on the board was that we were spending a lot of. of our time or losing time because we were going, instead of going the most direct route to get from A to B, we were going, you know, A, C, D, and then come back to B. Are we able to improve that?
We, one of the benefits of us shifting to a new bus planning system is also an ability to relook and reimagine our routes in an effective way and look at more efficiency gains, so the answer is yes.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with, what do we, how are we doing with getting and retaining our bus drivers?
So, since COVID, we have actually put a person in place that's specifically focused on hiring, recruiting for transportation that is embedded under my office. And so, I'm happy to report that we have actually hired over 20-plus bus drivers and actually are putting programs in place to actually influence people to come on before they have a CDL, to make sure that they have a path to a CDL. We can train them, we can get them onboard and they actually see themselves as part of the transportation system.
Kim? Are you gonna continue using the app, Here Comes the Bus?
Yes.
Okay, it does work really well, just to let you know.
I thank you.
All right, we're next.
All right. As we move into technology, just want to remind the board, you saw a presentation last year on cybersecurity and you'll see a couple of refreshers at the beginning of this.
Yes. So our previous executive director of technology, Candace Salmon-Hosey, provided this update in July of 21, and so I just want to resurrect a couple of slides that are still prevalent today and really real-time information that it still resonates. So as you see, cybersecurity incidences are still on the rise as just the metrics here, 27 victims had to pay back their networks because of issues. We had ransomware attacks in K-12 specifically and at least 13% were repeated incidences. So we want to make sure that we're thinking about these things as we think about cybersecurity and the opportunities that we could be yielding. This is a map that you saw previously. This is just a graphical representation of publicly disclosed K-12 cybersecurity incidences that date it back at that point to 2016. This is still relevant data because cybersecurity does not sleep and I'm sure this map has probably gotten worse over the last year. Cyber incidences include phishing attacks where online scammers impersonate people, data breaches, you see that both in hospitals, but public sector is no different, where we have confidential student information that could be a warehouse for people who want to have that information for their own purposes. Ransomware attacks, that includes encrypted files on devices and things like that, it could become inoperable. Criminals basically look and target these areas to make sure that they can release data to large populations. Denial of service attacks, so this is when your machine shuts down because someone's attacked it directly. Malware, I'm sure you've heard that multiple times. Again, if software is damaged in this case. Websites where someone could actually access and hack your website, modify the information that you're providing to external resources and act it on your behalf. And then Zoom bombing. I know personally, my daughter at the beginning of the pandemic had a person come on her Zoom and start texting students. So it's a real thing that we want, I think we've been really vigilant. From what I see, we do not have a lot of those incidences here, but I think at the start of the pandemic, that was really prevalent. So what are we looking at doing? We've done a lot of things over the last year. MFA, all of you wonderful people probably got a benefit of that, multi-factor identification, authentication, so that is just one piece of the cybersecurity bubble. Other pieces include your password protection and making sure that we have the right insurances in place and protocols in place. So here, we're looking at doing an outsourced version of cybersecurity to really focus in on all-day, 24/7 monitoring on our behalf. The goal is to have multi-layer monitoring and really invest in every single facet of our security to make sure that we are protected as a public entity. We're looking at putting out an RFQ in next month to make sure that we bring the best vendor on for the support of the service. Separately, there is a unified communication, as you've heard this multiple times, that as an organization, we want to focus on district-wide unified communications. Most of our systems are currently voice-over IP phones, but they're on-premise, which makes them a risk. So we want to move it towards a cloud-hosted unified communication so that we can have that security level in the cloud in lieu of, on a site that could be hacked at any point in time. That award is going out in July 2020 and we are hoping that will come back soon. So with that, I will pause on technology if anyone has any questions. And again, I will just voice that we will be going to closed session for any specific questions if you have them.
Thank you, Diane.
Is this also dealing with the fact that we shipped out a whole bunch of iPads to students? Are we, are we protecting them? Because there were some incidents, not in Gifford County, where students were communicating with folk and then, you know, getting picked up and that kind of stuff. And they did it on their student-issue laptops.
There are systems that we may have that does monitor that type of activity.
And as long as they're on a GCS network, then they are protected.
Correct.
It's when they.
Go outside of it.
Go outside of the network and log off of their device and somebody else logs on, that there's the potential for that, but we've done a lot of work to protect us and our students from being able to be, their devices being able to be accessed by somebody outside of the GCS network.
Do you have any idea of how many devices we have out there?
We have seventy thousand students.
Okay, so you got seventy thousand devices?
You were one-to-one, yep.
Okay, and we, and we're able to protect all of those?
They are, we have monitorings and systems in place to protect every device.
I don't see any other questions, so we can move on to emergency management.
So, let's talk emergency management. So Mike Ritchie, our wonderful executive director of emergency management, gave a presentation last week about our touchless weapon scanners. And so I'm happy to report that the pilot is currently underway and the two high schools that we talked about, there was a community session about two weeks ago that was highly attended by both board members, but also county commissioners and other officials. We have received some survey feedback and highly, highly impressed with the system, the efficiency, and very supportive of these products in place. So we just appreciate everyone coming out and the community supporting it. We are looking at rollout in 20, in August of 22. You'll note the same numbers that we talked about the last time as far as the target funding for this and the cost. Separately.
I just want to, this is a area the board has to make sure that this is in the budget for next, the following school year as it's being paid for by, as for this school year and its lease. So each year to maintain this, it has to be included into, is it capital outlay or the operating?
Operating for this.
Operating.
And it'll have to be in the 24, 25 budget, will be the first year. It'll need to be in the operating budget.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Our radio frequency upgrade, if, I'm sure you guys are familiar with it, but I'll just kind of, for education purposes. Many of our schools' architecture does limit radio communications for first responders and public safety in our buildings just because of the building materials that it's made out of. So our RFP was issued for emergency responder radio system to cover more of an area and allow for that two-way communication. We are finalizing the selection of the radio frequency upgrades. We actually had a committee that included Alan Duncan, which is an expert in this area. So, I'm sorry, Alan Purdue, not Alan Duncan. Whoa, Alan Purdue. Oh, no. Alan Purdue from the county commissioner, who at our, at our commissioner meeting, when they actually provided us with the finalized funding, asked to be a part of the process. So we really appreciate his attendance and also his ability to provide his expertise. We are looking at implementation beginning in July of 22. Again, this is a full capital project and the total price right now is 4.9 million. And finally, security cameras. So we are finalizing our security camera vendors, both for the systems as well as the replacement and cabling of the cameras throughout our school district. We are targeting $20 million, 2 million in capital and 18 million in ESSER funds for this process. We're looking at installations to start in August 22 and we can obviously go in closed sessions for any specifics on the locations that we're talking about. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Kim?
Are we using any facial recognition technology?
Not at this time.
Linda, then Deborah.
Are we gonna make, go do an inventory of all our cameras in all our high schools and middle schools?
We have done that.
And so, we're gonna, our goal will be to make sure that all of the high schools and middle schools are up to code as far as having high-quality functioning cameras, right?
Yes, that is the, that's the point.
So I'm not sure that there's a code, but.
There's no code.
I think there's maybe a standard that we're trying to get to. I don't think, I don't want to mislead and say that there's some city code or some state code that says how many cameras we should have, but there may be a standard we're working to.
Well-functioning cameras that if needed, we can see what's, what happened and what went down.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and we're transitioning from the old cameras. We won't be running bifurcated.
Analogues, yeah.
We're getting rid of the old cameras.
Right.
All I care about are all high schools and middle schools having functioning cameras that we can back, go back and review or, and that all of them will be at least the same standard level of workability and usefulness. Is that?
Yes, that's what I said. We're getting rid of the old ones to replace them.
Okay.
With these. Okay, we have Deborah, Diane, Winston, and then Anita.
Mine's pretty simple, fortunately. I understand that we've got RFPs issued, some of the vendors finalized. Are we looking at any supply chain issues that we should be aware of as we tell people we're looking at rollout dates? Anything you know that might be coming at us?
At this point, we cannot forecast any that we have been told by the suppliers.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah, okay. I know that our focus is on keeping our children safe, but we have buildings where we have staff. I haven't, I don't know that we've ever really had a conversation about, do we have security cameras or whatever that can also keep our staff safe that are not in school buildings? You know, in, in, in a school building. I'm talking about like at our locations, we're like here. Do we, have we done anything about security of, of staff that are outside of schools?
Now, most of the staff is in the schools, but as you, you probably, well, I don't want to discuss the location, we'll discuss the location of the cameras in closed session.
Okay, but do you understand what I'm asking?
I do, understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure we look out for our staff that's not in school buildings also.
Right, I was saying, most of them are, but as to the location of all the cameras in all the buildings, we'll discuss it in closed session.
Okay, all right.
Winston, then Anita, then Pat.
We have significant funding in the plan that's funded by the second bond that was passed, but is being held up by Mr. Branson's protests. Are any of these projects, cameras and security, how much of that is being delayed and held up because we don't have access to the bond dollars from the 1.7 billion?
Right, so these projects were already earmarked to have security cameras and the radio frequency, those are already pre-planned through the ESSER funding. However, with the holdup, we have a significant amount of need throughout the district. So the expansion beyond what we may be targeting is limited. We also wanted to do Bo alerts and various other security needs, especially, you know, secure vestibules and/or other areas that are not going to be able to be implemented because of this hold.
And the interoperable systems. Communication systems where we can contact police and fire, all of those things are being held up by the protests.
Correct, thank you.
Anita?
So when you say security camera locations, you don't mean sites, you mean within the sites?
Or discussion publicly? I mean both. Which sites? I don't, we can say, what I can say publicly is that 18 million is for, is it 18 million? I want to use the.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty million is for the high schools, middle schools. In terms of other sites, we can discuss that in closed session.
Okay, I understand that. I'm not asking about within the sites. I think I'm asking what Linda asked, that all the high schools, all the middle schools will have security cameras somewhere.
Correct. Pat?
Thank you. On the radio frequency, I know we've had a lot of discussion about that and exploration with it. Does that include, not to get into too many of the details for security, privacy issues, but does that include the interoperable systems with police, fire?
So this is, this is one of the things that we need to do to help with the systems, but it's not all. This, this funding is limited and we need to expand it in order to get to all of them, but it's only a portion.
Yeah, I think it allows agencies.
It doesn't look like a, I mean, for.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to do every school. I don't think we talked about that before when we were asking the county for the, to finally release the 4.4 million and two-thirds bonds that they issued. That's what these, where these dollars are being spent. And it allow agencies to talk to each other in our buildings. It's not really the things the superintendent was talking about, about calling out to 911. It's not those things and allowing agencies, law enforcement agencies to maybe connect to our security cameras so they can see what's going on in the building. It's not that kind of interoperability. This is just allowing them to talk to each other on their radios.
And as far as the footprint of the, of the site, you know, where classrooms are, where built facilities, spaces are, is that part of this technology where they can?
If we can discuss that in closed session, Mr. Tillman.
It can be just a general, or maybe you don't answer it, but yeah, I'd like to, yeah, we can do that in closed session.
Thank you.
Dana?
Anita?
Wasn't that the floor plan, wasn't that part of the NGT study? Was that never completed?
It was. You're talking about having the floor plans available to share with emergency management? Yeah, that, that part was done.
Okay.
All right, we can now move on to facilities.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about our facilities. So we have, as you know, targeted about 25 ESSER-funded HVAC projects to be completed. We also had about six planned capital HVAC and heating system upgrades that we are targeting as well. This will be both the chillers and the cooling towers, pumps, rooftop units, controls, boiler replacement, so it's running the gamut. These specifically that you're showing here, four completed projects from March to May that we have done. We have about 13 planned HVAC projects from June to August, so the summer. But we have been facing supply chain issues, so we did anticipate to have more during the summer because that's when we would like to do these types of projects to get prepared for the school year. But we did have to push off about 11 ESSER-funded projects to completion in the spring, I'm sorry, the fall and early winter of next year. So Building Services is actively knowing where we ended up in the beginning of the school year last year, looking to purchase about 40 to 60 portable coolers, cooling units to begin the school year because we typically have HVAC outages where feasible. When I say where feasible, it's because the load on the buildings, when we put these cooling units into a building, triggers other issues, i.e. your electric could go down because you're too much load on a system. So we have to be strategic in where we place these moving cools and make sure that we have enough to go around and spread to the buildings that we know are our worst offenders. So with that, I will show the list of all the projects that we actually have and the schools that we're targeting. So as I said, four schools were completed with chillers, pump replacements, cooling towers, what have you in the spring. And as of June, they were completed, about 13 for the summer are targeted. The list of those schools are here. We have 11 that we're funding, we're looking at focusing on for the fall and winter of '23. Those include two boiler and valve units that are specific to the heating systems and then the rest of them are primarily boiler. And then the rest of them are primarily boiler replacements for the end of the fall and into the summer of '23. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that. With more facility replacements, we have our typical capital plan that we use funding for. We have nine planned roof replacements between the summer and fall. The schools here, Johnson Street Global Studies, Swan Middle, the Media Center. Fall, we're looking at Oak Ridge Elementary, the gym roof. Oakview Elementary, Jackson Middle, 400 Wing, which will actually be housing our first through fifth grade Faust students. Southern High School Vocational Building Only, Florence Elementary Media Center, Southern High School Vocational Building and High Point Central Gym Roof. So all of those are planned to be completed summer and early fall of '22.
Ms. Sharp?
Why is southern on there twice? That's not my original question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just asking.
That's a typo.
Okay, I'm trying to do the math here. You said there were 25 Ezra-funded HVAC and six capital outlay HVAC, which is 31.
Correct.
You're showing four.
And I would say six both capital outlay HVAC and heating projects.
Okay. So that totals the 31 projects and I get, go back a slide?
Here?
I get 17?
Those are for the summer and previous spring.
So the other 14 are?
Between the 11 and the three. So fall, winter, 22 and the summer, 23. You see the slide there?
Well, it's kind of hard to.
Oh, I'm sorry. So here it says 11 and then it says three.
Okay.
Pilot through southwest.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you Diane.
Oh, sorry.
Did you get a chance to fix the rule for Allen and at Welborn?
I will have to get back to you on that. I'll check.
Okay, and then my other question is where you have the little, the little writing slide?
Here? Oh no.
Okay.
There we go. Here?
Yes. Okay, you, I see you have Murphy on there. Is that correct?
Yes, in the summer.
Are we not? Okay, is, is Murphy one of the schools to be torn down?
Eventually, I'm sure. However, we cannot stop doing these types of projects because we need to make sure that our HVAC systems are up to par. However, with our plan for implementation, we also know that whatever we size in a building, if we replace it now, we want to make sure that we are able to move it to a building that it needs to go to. So if we demo a building like Faust, we can utilize the, the heating or the chiller in another school.
Okay, well, see, that, that would make sense as opposed to you putting a new system in a building that we know you're going to be tearing down. So, so you have plans to repurpose?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Linda?
I don't see Northeast Middle on there because, and I have gotten a slew of phone calls on Northeast Middle. I know that we've band-aided it for the most part. So I guess my question is, is where, how we're gonna deal with that?
I think that for HVAC systems specifically, while you may hear problems, we have 126 schools. And so these are the top issues of the schools that we know about from a work order history perspective that we target the Ezra 25 towards. We only get a certain amount of capital dollars to focus on everything. And so what I can do is I can check with our Building Services to find out where Northeast would fall in the list. However, at this point, these are the, the schools that were the highest priority for our work orders.
Right. Well, like everything, things change with, with 126 schools. You might have thought this one over here was okay and now it's not okay. So I mean, with 126 schools, you're always going to have rotating needs. I mean, even with building needs, there's going to be, you can't control where people go and populate. And so that, and over 10 years, we're going to see a lot of change there. I mean, especially about what's going on. So, you know, we have to always reassess the situation and make sure that we're, we're getting the critical need.
Thank you, Mrs. Welborn. This list was generated this year. So it is based on the latest data we have on work orders and the amount of times we've had issues. So to your point, all of these schools need help, but these are, I, we agree with that. But these are the priority based on the amount of funding we have. And I just want you and the community and the rest of the board to know, it is based on the latest data we have regarding the conditioning of the HVAC systems in the schools.
Alright, thank you. Is that it for?
One more, actually a few more.
No, 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 I just meant for, you're still on facilities.
Mm-hmm. So this is our non-bond capital project status. So our Sylvia Mendez Newcomers School at High Point Central at Tomlinson Building, we are currently in review for our plans. The city's comments were received and we're addressing all of the, the items that they identified. We're targeting move-in January 23 and the funding source is Ezra in capital. Our e-learning Virtual Academy at Hunter, construction actually started with the demo. Is complete, framing and materials were delivered and starting this week. And the plumbing also has started with the mechanical systems to commence afterwards. Again, similar timeframe, January 23 is when we're anticipating move-in. And previously, there was a Ezra-funded project for the window replacements that has since commenced. And we are happy to report that all the windows are brand new and beautiful for our Ferndale Middle School. That was capital. Okay, thank you. Alright. If there's no questions, I'll keep moving. So as Dr. Contreras alluded to, our Claxton and Faust have moved out completely to make way for abatement and demo. We just wanted to say thank you to the principals and staff who made this possible over the last months. These pictures here are depictions of the various activities that have happened. The installation of the mobile units at Jesse Warden Elementary School site is underway with the gravel pads being laid down this week. We are working with the city of Greensboro to expedite the building permit to start the installation of the mobiles in place. And the existing mobiles on the Pack Elementary's campus have been demolished. So that's actually making the way for a future site improvements. So the current state of our bond is just continuing. We have met design development completion for four of our six bond projects that launched. Preliminary pricing efforts are underway for our design development drawings. As discussed in our 2020, January 22 board meeting, inflation has caused a significant shift in construction costs for all industries and ours is no different. In some cases, we are seeing certain materials be 50 to 75% more than what they were a year ago or even two years ago. So that's still due to fuel spikes that were attributed to the Ukraine and also just supply shortages, goods and materials increases and labor shortages are still impacting the construction market holistically. We're looking to get finalized and locked in pricing to be received for our guaranteed maximum price, which is needed for us to lock in our, our final budgets for all projects here soon. So I'll just talk a little bit about the Community Education Center. The superintendent and staff have been in discussions with North Carolina, A&amp;T State University to determine a mutually beneficial opportunity to locate potentially the Community Education Center on the Gateway Research Park campus. Because of the use of federal funds for this project, we are looking at opportunities to make sure that our usage of the funds align with state statute. And then finally, the sequencing, as you know, the sequencing of our 1.7 billion bond projects. You approved our architects and our program managers at our two, two board meetings ago. But as we look forward to the next bond effort, we want to make sure that we continue the work on implementation in our implementation plan. So one would ask, why do you need an implementation plan? Well, for a program our size and complexity with multiple, multiple factors, including needing to have swing space, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing both the worst conditions of schools, but also what we can do within the plan to make sure that we're making strategic decisions. And so we are evaluating that implementation plan through the lens of the different project types we have. Sure. So typically a project manager, project management firm that we authorize to negotiate contract with, I think would help draft the implementation plan, provide expertise in significant amount of time. That's being held up by the protest on the bond. So is staff doing this work? Are we just waiting until we can get project management contracted and working on this? And how does that impact our planning? Right, so we have to be proactive. We, we can't delay. And so staff has been working on this in lieu of. We would love to have the benefit of having a program manager with us side by side to make sure that the things that we don't know or don't have benefit of knowing, that they will be able to bring that subject matter expertise to the table. But regardless, we still have to keep this plan going and we are working on it as, as a staff members for now. So, I mean, we'll know more, I think, about the progress of the bond. But I mean, we get into July and August, do we need to look at alternative funding sources? Even talking to the county so that we can get consulting services from? Even if we can't negotiate a long-term project management contract because the bond certification is being held up, should we be looking at other sources of funding and consulting with experts who can help us build the best implementation plan, you know, given the variables and dynamics?
Certainly, so I think once we get to Thursday, I think we'll know. But for right now, I just, I think there's just not a lot we can do. But once we get to Thursday and see what the result of the hearing is, then, then we'll know if there's anything we can do or, or not. And, and we certainly can approach the county at that point.
Probably by the end of July because there's still potential for other legal action that could slow progress and stall moving on these, right? Which is only going to cost us more money. Which will cost more money. Every, every month we lose, absolutely. And so that, that actually is a good segue to my last slide, which is about the 2020 bond projects. And I know it's been mentioned a few times in this venue. And so I just want to take the time to reiterate that our county commissioners cannot move forward in approving the project ordinances that we have targeted. Even though we as a board have approved our architects and also our two program management firms, that is being held up for actually being issued as a fair process because our approved 1.7 billion in school bonds are under appeal by our GOP candidate Alan Branson. So as it stands now, the election is uncertified. Until it is certified, we cannot work with our county commissioners to issue and support our project ordinances. The state law requires that school districts have the money in the bank prior to starting construction. That also means prior to issuing contracts to a program management firm. Since the county commissioners cannot approve the project ordinances that release the funds to GCS until this case is resolved, we are pretty much at a standstill. So while we are confident that GCS in Guilford County will prevail, delays in cost every single month that we lose, every single week that we lose and is a cost to the program 1.7 billion. As we flash back to what we just said about inflation, it will, it's not stopping. So that also is going to impact our success rate. So resources and time, which means our children and the children's children of our county and the teachers who have waited long enough over 30 years will be living in the same conditions and we will have the same fight every single year with HVAC and heat and leaking roofs and various other conditions because we do not have the ability to move on any of these projects. So I would say that while we are looking forward to the legal counsel and, you know, the representation on the protests for the 1.7 going on June 30th, we need to make sure that this is moving expeditiously towards an outcome that has a benefit for all because right now we are not. And every single day loss is a dollar lost. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions, additional questions.
Now, Pat?
Yeah, I think that sequencing is important to talk about. So the 300 million, I mean, we're, those six projects. Share a little maybe for the public too about the 1.7 billion about the sequencing. I know that it's in limbo right now. I mean, because we do have quite a big, you know, projects to chew on with the 300 million. What, where in with a 1.7? When was that going to effectively start? Because, I mean, I mean, well, maybe share that. I mean, I think some of us know, but I mean, maybe the public doesn't know exactly when the timeline was. Maybe they thought the 300 million and then at some point later in '22 into '23, the 1.7 billion. So maybe just talk a little bit about that because I think if we're gonna just, it's probably helpful to give some context to that.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we, obviously, we are, we have been working on the 300 million dollars since August of last year when it was approved for architects and CMRs to start the work. We launched our schematic designs in October and it takes about 12 months for you to actually complete a design. That goes from schematic, a, a concept, a dream in your head to actual real documented, something that you can actually put in someone and say, price it. The ability for us to do that, but also thinking about early site packages and things that we can get ahead of inflation by saying, we want to do steel now. We want to make sure that we have site information now and bids out. That locks us into pricing, that allows us to actually be more flexible with what we know and understand, you know, we can make decisions as a district, how we want to move, maneuver on a project. For the 1.7 billion, we were anticipating to start as soon as the project ordinances were issued, which is why we expedited the architects and engineers. We expedited the program managers for both of the programs because we wanted to make sure that we were ready as soon as we got the word that the, the bond passed to make sure that we get people under contract and move. Because the delay for our staff is, again, dollars lost every single time you delay. So we were looking at launching designs immediately for every single project that's listed because we wanted to make sure that we had the best information and also, you know, develop a program that can be implemented very quickly and expeditiously. Yep.
Diane?
I know this is probably not a question you can answer, but do we have a Plan D on the scale? B and C? I mean, if this, if he were to prevail, would we have to start over again?
So that would be on the county to determine that? I think if he were to prevail, then our board would. Oh, okay.
Jill?
Well, that, that was actually a very good answer, whoever said that. Our job, as you know, as the Board of Education is to present the need and we have done that very well. We have presented the need and in fact, 61% of your voters agree with you that we have a pressing need in this county to improve our facilities. How to, how to finance that need is the job of the commissioners. And the commissioners believe and support the 61% of your voters. And we're obviously going to appear on your behalf at the State Board of Elections on Thursday to present our position that the protest position is without merit. How though to finance anything is always in the hands of the county and not in the hands of the Board of Education or even the voters. So the fact that the bond passed doesn't, doesn't say how you're going to pay for these schools. It's up to the county to determine how you're going to pay for these schools. The bond just gives them another methodology of doing it. So that's never going to be in our control or our, our say. Or, you know, it's totally up to the county how they finance that need.
Okay, so there could be a Plan D if the county decided that it was important enough to still fund these school projects, even if that doesn't, if, if, if the protests were to rule in Branson's favor? Is that what you're telling me?
I don't believe that the outcome of any of this is going to be that there will be no funding for schools. I don't think that's the likely outcome of any of this. So I, and then I think we'll wait and see, but I think that's an unlikely outcome.
Okay, I mean, I just feel like that, you know, we all want this. But if it doesn't happen the way we want it, do we have a Plan D? That was, that was just, you know, that's why I was asking.
Like I said, we have a plan, which is we need $2 billion worth of improvements. We have presented that plan. The voters have supported one way to fund that plan. And I believe that that will ultimately be how that gets funded, but we will see. It's up to the commissioners.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, I just had to follow up on the legal part of this, the, the outcome. So to put it in more layman's terms, if, if the, it, it's proven that it doesn't go our way in terms of the bond, would, would, would it, would it go back to the voters? Would it go back on the ballot? Is that a possibility?
This is all, it would all be pure speculation. I do not believe the State Board of Education has that authority based on this situation. Board of Elections, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll see.
But is there legal precedent out there that?
No. As a matter of fact, there is not. No, as a matter of fact, there is not.
All right, I don't see any other questions. Are you ready for school nutrition?
Thank you. Good evening. I want to talk just for a few seconds. I only have three slides about school nutrition, so my part will be brief. We, while there was some good news about what happened in Washington this week regarding school nutrition program and some waivers, the waiver for free school meals was not extended into next school year. So that's important to note. The summer program that we're operating currently, which has always provided free meals to children 18 and younger in Guilford County, is still, is still, those are, meals are, are still going to be free. They were always free, but they, they did extend the waivers through the summer program beyond June 30th for the non-congregate, the meal times and the, the ability for parents and student, or parents or guardians to pick up meals rather than the students having to come get them themselves. So that is continuing through the summer program. Those non-fiscal waivers will continue in the '22, '23 school year to the degree that they can. Clearly, you know, we won't have parent pick up meals for kids who are attending school. We will continue to have the, the non-congregate meal service if we need to, if for some reason students can't eat in the cafeteria. The biggest benefit that we see in the continuation of the waivers is the flexibility in the meal pattern as we continue to experience supply chain issues. We have difficulty perhaps meeting all those meal pattern requirements, all the nutrition requirements in meals. This allows us the flexibility to not be able to do that as, as we get deliveries, food deliveries, and sometimes we have delays or substitution, substitutions that prevent us from being able to meet the meal patterns. So that's the, the good part of the waiver that was passed last week, extending that into '22, '23. They also did increase the reimbursement rate for school lunch by 40 cents for next year and the school breakfast reimbursement rate is 15, has been increased by 15 cent for the '22, '23 school year. So that will help with those increased costs that we see that are associated with food shortages and supply chain issues.
There's just some lingo, Angie, that I'm not understanding. So when you say flexibility and meal pattern, what does that mean?
So when we develop our menu, we have to create meals that meet a certain threshold for fat, sodium, calories. All of our meals have to meet that standard. There's a standard that we have to have meals meet. We've been given flexibility to not have to meet those standards for every meal because, because sometimes food's not available or we're having supply chain issues getting those foods. Whole grains is another standard that we have to meet in those, in those meal patterns.
So Mrs. Henry, it means on days we had a supply chain issue, we were allowed to take a credit card and go to a, go get pizza, for example, so that students could eat.
Right, and didn't have to measure the sodium in the pizza or measure the, the trans fats in the pizza or those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kim.
The whole grains. Okay. So as we continue, this means because the waivers weren't, the, the free lunch, free meal service waivers weren't continued into '22, '23, that means we've got to once again start collecting the free and reduced price meal applications effective right now. We're collecting, well, I'll say July 1st, we're collecting them for '22, '23. Students in non-CEP schools that have not qualified for free or reduced price meals when school starts are going to be in full pay status, meaning that they're going to have to start paying for breakfast and lunch once again. The good thing is that they're '21, '22 status and, and we made a real push this spring to get families to complete free and reduced applications, even though meals for this year are free because their '21, '22 status will carry over for the first 30 days of the '22, '23 school year. And then again, effective July 1st, starting July 1st, we'll have applications available in English and Spanish for families that can pick up at our schools. We also mail those applications out typically as we get closer to the start of school and there's an online submission available at lunchapplication.com where families can fill out an application. Their families only have to fill out one application per household and they just list every student in that household on the application. It's important that we continue to encourage all families. This has been something that Superintendent Contreras has, has, has urged us and challenged us to do since she first got here about being sure that all of our families complete applications, not just because we have so many students in need, but in part because we have so many students in need, but also because the impact it has on our federal grant funding that we receive. It's, a lot of those funds are based on children in poverty. And so the more students we can have complete these applications, the, the, hopefully the impact, we'll see the impact on our federal grant funds.
And I'll just add, I think we know and we saw even more post-pandemic that undocumented students were, you know, we, we weren't getting all of the forms that we know that we, particularly in hyper segregated areas of poverty in our community, just like census completion. Like, you know, and so we are going to have to employ some different strategies, like teams that go door to door with interpreters to help us get to people to do this. It's been a couple of years and so I think, I think it's going to be a district-wide effort. I think we're going to have to pay very, very close attention as we get to that first 30 days of the next school year.
Thank you. And, and to, to help with our, to help our, educate our principals on this again, because we have some principals in place who weren't principals before the pandemic started. And so they are not aware of how the completion of these free and reduced lunch applications impacts even their Title I allocation to their schools. So it's really important that we, we help educate our principals and our school staff at the same time where we're doing outreach to the community to get these applications complete.
And we are sending out staff in the same way we did with the census to get out to homes in the same areas. We're using the percentages of families that had difficulty with immunizations to guide where we need to send outreach so that we can start immediately in July, knocking on doors to try to get the applications completed. It's very important. The district will use millions of dollars, not just in Title I, but how the federal government, USDA decides on district eligibility for competitive grants is based on the percentage of free and reduced breakfast and lunch learners in your district. So it's very important that everybody does everything they can to make sure we get applications back. Even a parent say not interested, every parent should send something back.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kim and then Pat and Betty.
The lunch application, I noticed that Guilford County is not listed on the, on the lunch application online.
So that'll change on July 1st because that's when we'll be accepting it. We've stopped accepting applications for the current school year and we will be accepting applications for the '22, '23 school year after July 1st.
Oh, okay, because other districts are already up and running. So if, if, whatever. Are we going to put applications like in the libraries and things like that, paper applications?
We, our intent was to mail them to all of our, our students. I mean, we'll have them available in the schools and, and we will mail them. We can certainly provide copies or ask, I mean, let the libraries know where they can access copies if, if that's going to be beneficial to our residents.
The other question I have in regards to providing food for the district, have we ever looked into outsourcing, how we do that?
So we did outsource for a bit of time in the early 2000s, I think, yeah.
Only because things have changed, it looks, it looks like. That's why I was asking.
Right, so, yeah, we've, we've done that. It wasn't, it wasn't great.
It wasn't great for who?
For our staff, for our students and for the outsourcing company. They ended the contract, not us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pat and Betty.
Yeah, I had this conversation just a couple of weeks ago with an assistant principal and a couple of other folks and, you know, and it's going to require a real boots on the ground. I mean, getting the churches involved in the faith communities because that's where a lot of these kids go and that's where they have connection points in, in some of these areas. So I, I'm delighted that that's going on and I know we'll just need more of that. But I hope that we'll be creative and if board members can help connect dots in our districts respectively, especially in the communities we're talking about, that's going to be where it really happens. I mean, there's some schools, we know this, that multiple languages, parents call in, there's no translator, they can't even get help. It takes two or three days before they can figure out what student they're talking about. So I think this summer is going to be very important for all of us to be mindful of this and, you know, where we have relationships, whether it be a church or a rec center, whatever it is, so.
You're exactly right, including hair salons, barber shops, public libraries, pools, anywhere we know kids and families attend, we have to have applications there or something that shows them how to go online and how important this is. So your point is well taken.
Thank you. Betty, then Diane?
Well, I think about the contraries and Pat has stated most of it, but I am concerned about after the 30-day window. This is not new. This has been an ongoing process as far as trying to get applications completed. I know there've been support staff as far as social workers, counselors, other staff members that's trying, was trying to get that done. As far as boots on the ground, we need more than boots on the ground. We need to look at all our rec staff. We need to look at the football team, the basketball team, everywhere there's more than 10 students at a time in order to get this completed. And I'm also concerned about the food that the kids are being served. And I think I mentioned to a staff member a couple of meetings ago to look at a particular school and to get back with me about the food that was served, but we will talk about that in August. So if anything that I can do for my, for all the students, particularly for the schools in District 7, I definitely will be boots on the ground to make sure we get 100%.
Evidently you can use a credit card and go buy them all pizza.
Ms. Henry, may I have a credit card, please? Thank you.
So, so, yeah. Can I, I just want to make a statement too, Ms. Jenkins, because the superintendent has asked us, once we, I mean, the waivers just came so late that we weren't prepared to do it at this meeting, but the superintendent has asked us to bring back to the board in July, consideration of the charge meal policy that we have, maybe relaxing it for a period of time, just due to that 30-day, the concern that you've expressed and other people have expressed about that 30-day window. So the superintendent, like I said, has asked us to do that in, in July or when we, when we got worried about the waivers, it's just that they came down in the last couple of days, so we had, we didn't bring it to this meeting, but we'll have something in July.
Okay, thank you. And also be getting information about the lowest percentage of school in District 7 and I will work on that particular school to make sure we get 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, and then Kim.
Okay, I realize that probably there's not much you can do about it since you said that we have certain guidelines for what the food should taste like or maybe not what it should taste like, but what we can and cannot have. But as you know, some of our high school students weren't real happy with their menus this past year and, and we defeat our purpose if we're trying to provide this food and then the kids are throwing away, you know, 50% of it. And we do know that in some schools, the kids are just not eating it. And so, and I grant, and I understand that part of that is not our problem because if children are not exposed to certain things at home, then, I mean, like take raw vegetables. If you don't eat raw vegetables and fruit at home, then you may not want to eat them at school. But I'm not sure what else we can do as far as making our menus more appealing.
I think let's do the next slide and then go to the rest of the questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Right, so I do want to talk about what we're doing. For those of you who have not had a chance to see our new executive director, he's been here almost six months, Travis Fisher, who came to us from South Carolina, and he's really hit the ground running. He's been visiting schools every, I would say every day, but I know it's every week. I know for sure he's visiting schools every week. He has visited the schools where we're having concerns expressed about menu items. He's also worked, bringing lots of new ideas and fresh ideas. So one thing he started is Taste Test Tuesdays and that started this year. And so we have had taste tests at various schools across the district. You can see that we have tasted soy butter sandwiches. I didn't taste one, probably wouldn't, but we tasted, Taste Test for bottled teas, smoothies, wraps, veggie burgers, cheesy cauliflower, some Alfredo sauce and ice cream. We are going to continue those taste tests into the '22, '23 school year. And again, those will continue to be at various schools across the district. We were able to, we've issued an RFP to serve pizzas in our schools to bring in kind of a nationally branded pizza in our schools. And so we did have Taste Test at a high school with Papa John's and Domino's, two of the responders to our, or two of the people who we, companies who we are going to respond to our RFP. And we were able to make a slice of pizza, I don't know if it was one slice or two, I'll have to go back and look at that, part of the reimbursable meal so that we could claim reimbursement for those. And that was very successful in the schools where we tested that. Also, in an effort to try to address the problems we've had with, with being delivered or receiving substitute items for items, orders that we've placed and for product shortages that we've experienced with our previous food vendor, we had, we did do a bid, even though it had only been a year. So we did another food bid and Cisco has been awarded our bid for the '22, '23 school year. So that's a little bit larger company that we think we're, our dietitian and our menu planners are working with them to determine what products we'll have available to place on our menus in the '22, '23 school year. And finally, we do have a food court committee. Another thing the superintendent has been pushing and challenging us to do is to have, find ways in schools that are constructed the way they're currently built, but to still be able to offer some kind of food court experience to our students to help drive sales and push more appetizing food out to our students, particularly in high schools. So we do have some subvient managers and our supervisors working on that. They're looking at some à la carte sales as well as line layouts so that we can make it have, have more of a food court experience and to speed a service in, in many of our schools where we're having a challenge getting kids through the lunch line. And that is my last slide now. So if you have any questions about the food, I'm happy to answer those.
Yeah, we had Kim, you have a question? I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Okay, just as a suggestion, I think it was what, two board meetings ago, we had a very large group of our Hispanic, Latinx, Latino community that were here. And I think if I recall, there was something like 138 comments. Is there any way we can perhaps build on that for that particular community since we had such a large response? And, you know, obviously they, they care about schools and this is another opportunity for them to help us. Is that something that could be done using those emails or using the contacts of the people who were here that day?
So certainly we can use, we can use a variety of means to get feedback.
No, I'm talking about to, to help with the applications.
Oh, the applications, oh, I'm sorry, yes. I thought you were talking, I thought you were back to talking about.
No, 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 no. I, I didn't get a chance to finish, so.
Yes, certainly we, we'll use, you know, all the means that we have available.
Okay, and then.
And Dr. Kay's going to talk about a communication plan for this in her, in her part of the presentation, which is next, that, that'll help us get.
Okay, so you want me to wait again?
No, 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 I'm not asking you to wait. I'm just, I'm just saying we can, we'll use every means available and every group that's available to us to, to get the word out about getting these free and reduced priced meal applications out.
Okay, Kim, did you have another question?
Yeah, I had a general question in regard to the cost and that the fact that we charge adults more money for the same meal and is that, you know, is there any kind of reprieve from doing that?
So the reason we do that and, and USDA regulations. So the reason we do that, and USDA regulations require that we do that, because as I mentioned in an earlier slide, we do get a federal reimbursement for every meal that we serve to a student. We don't get that reimbursement for an adult meal that we serve. So we have to charge the adult, the cost of the $2.85 that we charge a student for the meal, plus whatever the reimbursement is. So that way, we're getting the full, we're getting the revenue, the full revenue for that meal.
So the, the adults are paying the, the district to eat?
Yes, the adults are having.
By federal regulation. It's true in every, every school district, it's the federal regulation.
They check that very closely when they come to do their administrative reviews. They ensure that we are charging adult meals the appropriate price.
And to do otherwise, would, would supplant federal dollars for the purpose that they're provided, so you would be in lots of trouble.
What'd you say?
If you use federal, that federal subsidy to supplant the amount paid by adults, you would be violating the terms of that award and you would be in trouble.
All right, it's supplanting the money, USDA funding for food is the same as Title I, Title II. So if you use it for, other than students, you're supplanting the funds.
Yeah, and there, the USDA even requires for, when we set the price for our paid meal students, that we ensure that we're not using funds that we get for free and reduced students to help offset the cost for paid meals. They're, I mean, it's very, it's nonsensical.
The district did increase the cost at one point.
Several years ago, we haven't done that. Gosh, it's probably been five or six years since we've increased the lunch price.
Okay.
Because for two, the last two years, we've been serving them free. So, yeah.
All right, looks like we're ready to move to Student Services.
First, Dr. Kay's going to do Communication and Outreach.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Dr. Kay.
If, before you start, I just wanted to update the board on, if I may, on the facilities point we talked about earlier. I just received information on the Community Education Center that, many thanks to Representative John Hardester, we do have in the, as a, in the state budget, allowing Guilford County Schools a long-term lease for Community Education Center that allows us to enter into a lease of 50 years or greater with a private development, which will complement and align with the Guilford County Community Education Center referred to in the previous subsection. The private development must be located on the same property as the Guilford County Community Education Center within the Gateway Research Park. So that is a huge win, and I just want to thank Representative Hardester, because he worked relentlessly the last two weeks to get that done.
Great, thank you. All right, Dr. Kay.
Thank you, good evening. So in addition to the many ways that our district relations team supports every division in the district, under Dr. Contreras's leadership, we have really been leaning into our part in the vision to transform learning and life outcomes for all students, especially those that are farthest from opportunity. The pandemic presented both challenges and opportunities for reaching families and recruiting staff. We heard through the ESAR Community Engagement Process that we needed to consider new ways of communicating. We had to add new tools to our toolbox to reengage the disengaged and to embrace the new ways that our community gets its information through social media and other mobile sources. GCS allocated a tiny fraction, about a half a percent, of our federal recovery pandemic funds to these projects to increase student enrollment and access to free and reduced-priced meals and to think outside the box and try really progressive ways to aggressively pursue staff members that our students deserve. You can see an example on the slide of one of the banner graphics that is being pushed to local individuals whose digital habits suggest that they may have rising kindergarteners. As of yesterday, there are over 250 more kindergarteners enrolled for this coming school year compared with June 27th of 2021. That's an 11% increase over last year. We're also using these tools for staff recruitment. Unlike traditional recruitment strategies, these cutting-edge digital marketing tools can be used to target people who don't yet know that they want to be part of Team GCS. We are digitally headhunting instead of waiting for candidates to come to us. So we launched in early May with the Kindergarten Roundup, and we've added other campaigns in the following weeks as we kind of learned how the systems work. So far, these efforts are really promising. We have over 7.8 million impressions so far, so that's 7.8 million times that these campaigns have been seen on someone's device. Over 28,000 click-throughs, that's how marketing measures the effectiveness of their efforts. And on the staff side, we have over 1,250 leads, so names and contact information of people who might want to be our next great teachers, subs, and bus drivers. So far, we confirmed as of today over 80 completed applications that are directly attributed to this campaign, and that number is definitely going to climb. In fact, a story I heard a few minutes before the meeting, yesterday, we had a recent UNCG computer science grad who walked in the door of the HR department to tell us that he had applied after seeing a recruitment ad in his feed, his social media feed, and he was so excited about learning from the digital campaign that he could qualify to turn his skills that he had taken as an undergrad teaching assistant into a career. So it's really, we're just really excited about the, the opportunities to use this in new ways. So currently, we're focusing our campaigns in this area on these, these five buckets, new students and returning students, teachers and subs, bus drivers and custodians, and free and reduced-priced meal applications. So you'll see the FRPL meal applications launch after July 1st, as Ms. Henry mentioned. We have to take it after July 1st in order to run with it, but this is a way for us to really, like, we can get that link onto somebody's phone while maybe we can target the back-to-school bash and push ads to people's phones who are physically in that location at that time where they can click and fill out the application right from their phone. So it's really exciting. We're really excited about this work. We also have General Assembly funds that were allocated, these were federal funds that were allocated to all districts across the state through a grant to locate and engage so-called missing students. The funding was prioritized by the state to address the statewide concern that North Carolina public school enrollments dropped by over 63,000 students during the pandemic. And on this one, Dr. Contreras did what she does best. She made it really clear to us that her vision for ensuring that every single student gets access to transformational learning opportunities includes the students who aren't currently enrolled in our schools. We really have to find the approximately 3,000 students who withdrew without a reason for their transfer during the pandemic to make sure that they're okay. We are among the first districts in the state to seek proposals for vendors to help us use data to locate disengaged families and to organize community canvassing and direct contacts to ensure that every child is enrolled in school and gets connected to the resources that they need. We received the proposals yesterday, and so after, we have a team that'll be scoring those, and we anticipate beginning this work in late July. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this work.
Diane and Betty.
Can I finish now? Okay, back to the free and reduced lunch. I think you, you might have mentioned, but last year, we encouraged the Guilford County Health Department to connect with back-to-school programs to get folks vaccinated and tested. So I would suggest there are a couple of, in August, and I know I pushed the names out that I knew to, Nora, you weren't here then, to make that contact as far as the pandemic was concerned, but I think, I think what I'm hearing you say is a good possibility that, like, for these after-school events, back-to-school events, we could, you could have people do it on their phone. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that, that would be the suggestion, as well as the one I made earlier about reaching out to the Latinx community. And this, I don't know what your mailing list looks like for churches or email list, but, you know, church bulletins are still a good way to reach people who are sitting at church. And if nothing else, just to give them the, the link to put in the church bulletin as opposed to worrying about applications. So I, like I said, I don't know what your church mailing list looks like, but, you know, we got 1,000 churches in Guilford County. Can't tell it by behavior necessarily, but they're here. So maybe we can use them in that way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kim was talking. Looking at the number which you gave, 3,000 students that's unaccounted for, that was asked of what date?
I don't know the answer to that question, I'll have to get back to you, but I believe that it's from the 2019-20 school year to the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay, so did we do any work this year as far as looking, trying to find out where they are and contacting charter schools to see if they was there?
We, we did this school year, and we also have followed up on some of those. So we'll be really targeting the students who have a withdrawal that doesn't have a transfer code. So when a student goes to another school, another district, they're in an accredited homeschool, this, that gets entered into the system, and we have a lot of students that don't have a withdrawal code. So those are the ones that we'll target first.
All right, I don't see any more questions. Oh, you have one, I'm sorry, Kim.
I just want to be clear on the missing students and then the campaign to enroll students, is that two different things that we're doing? To making sure that we're enrolling the students that should, you know, be coming into GCS and then we're going after students who were in GCS but have left?
So both.
We are doing both.
Yeah, and, and for, there's another reason. At some point, I think the district made a concerted effort not to go, to recruit homeschool students and others, private school students that are allowed, if they live in the county, to take two classes, I believe. Or if they take two classes, we give funding for those students. We have not gone out to try to re-invite those students back into the district, so we have a push to do that, because many of those families want to access our AP courses, IB courses, sports programs, and this will allow them to do that while also bringing funding into the system. So that's part of the effort. We're also trying to make certain that families know about our outstanding programs, about our kindergarten programs, high school programs, because as you all know from our graduations, we have students that are accepted into the best schools in the state, the best schools into the, in the nation, all of the military academies utilizing gap programs. Many don't know all of the courses and programs that we have here and how successful all of our high schools are. So we're working on that. But then, there's a group of students that disappeared. We don't know where they are, and there's not a, each state has some sort of tracking system by your student ID, but there's not a federal student ID. So we don't know if they've left the state, if they're in private school, if they're being homeschooled unless they register. And in the case of going to another school, that school has to ask for records. That's the only way we would know if they are in another school. So we're also focusing on those students, so different groups, incoming kindergarteners, because that's where we experience the most loss.
Okay.
Students who are eligible to take some courses in the district, and then students who we have lost track of.
Okay, my other question then, do we plan on going back to in-person? Like, do we do open houses that are in-person for kindergarten here?
Oh, yeah.
We used to do that.
We still do.
Okay, so you are still doing that? Okay, and the same thing? We are, you are. Do you think we're gonna go back to our magnet fairs and things like that next year? Hopefully, a targeted to be back in person?
Yes, as long as we are permitted to have large groups gathering, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. As Mr. Robinson transitions, if there's no more questions on the Communication and Outreach, I just want to let the board know that there's many, many areas in Student Services that have been deeply impacted in the post-COVID world, perhaps more than any other area. And we're going to give a brief update tonight around mental health, substance use, attendance, student discipline, and Title IX, what we can say in open session, and then we'll discuss more in closed session. But the board can look for a presentation in July, August, that goes into more detail on each of these, just because it's a lot, and it warrants its own, it warrants its own presentation, so.
I just, just to stress this again, there will be a follow-up presentation on Student Services, because it warrants at least its own work session. There are so many divisions, there's foster care and discipline and mental health and counseling. This is just the brief transition presentation. So I know you'll have lots of questions, but if, you can ask some tonight, but if you have more in-depth questions, if you can just write a list so that we can start preparing for the presentation in July. Thank you. I mean, Dr. Oakley will stop preparing.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished board members. I'll be walking you through a series of high-level updates and next steps, ranging from mental health services and student discipline. As we all know, the issue of student mental health has never been more pressing or central to keeping our schools safe and ensuring that we graduate students who are ready to be successful, productive citizens, and leaders in the world. According to data, according to data from the National Survey of Children's Health, the number of children ages 3 to 17 years diagnosed with anxiety grew by 29% and those with depression by 27% between 2016 and 2020. And between 2019 and 2020, there was a 21% increase in children diagnosed with behavioral or conduct problems. So in accordance with North Carolina's school-based mental health policy, requiring us to adopt and implement mental health training and a suicide referral protocol, GCS is responding to address the most prevalent mental health challenges our students face, such as substance use, emotional crisis, and stress, through prevention, early intervention, instruction, training, data evaluation, treatment, and referral collaboration. Some implementation examples from the 20, from the 21-22 school year include mandatory online vector training on suicide identification and protocols for all GCS employees, launch of the youth mental health first aid training for all GCS employees, tobacco and vaping program for referred GCS students, trauma-informed care in schools, training for school leaders and teachers, and collaborative partnerships with community-based organizations to provide telehealth and mental health services to GCS students, and consultation and emergency services to students who are experiencing a mental health crisis. Here, we have a list of some of the things that we're doing now, including some of the contracts and agreements with some of our mental health providers in the community, including our triage grant, training to respond and form an act for Guilford County Security Evaluation Plan, and some of the other things that we're doing. As I mentioned before, substance use is a well-known impediment to healthy student development and academic achievement. According to the 21 Monitoring the Future Survey, 12.1% of 8th graders, 19.5% of 10th graders, and 26.6%. and twenty-six-point-six percent of twelfth graders reported vaping in the previous year. You can see these high numbers reflected in the number of student referrals to our vaping, to our vaping education program from the previous years. You can see here that the number of referrals received for the possession and use of tobacco has increased tremendously. We've not experienced a lot of change over the past three years with the possession or use of alcohol or the drugs. Under the direction of Dr. Contreras, we have designed our substance use prevention services to range in scope from prevention to early intervention and referral to meet the needs of our diverse student population. And I'll briefly walk you through each of our programs. First is our nicotine vaping prevention toolkit, which provides schools with resources addressing the vaping epidemic from four critical perspectives. Free curricula, lesson plans and videos, family resources, school-level prevention services and resources, and programming for youth who actually want to quit. Second, in the area of prevention, is our Grad Fest mini-grants that support drug-free graduation celebrations each year to qualifying schools selected to provide a diverse sample of school size, number, and referral locations. A number of these schools incorporated drug-free activities in their celebrations this past year. And some of those in schools, some of those schools included Dudley High School, High Point Central, Northern Guilford High School, Southwest, and Guilford Western High School. Moving to early intervention services, alternative to suspension programs were provided for students that violated rules related to substance use and possession at school. These rules include Rule Five, which addresses tobacco and related products, and Rule Twenty-four, which addresses alcohol and other drugs, which can be found in the Student Handbook or Code of Conduct. Programming in these areas included our tobacco and vaping education program, which provides two-hour classes at school homes, at students' homes, usually at the end of the school day. The program provides students with a wealth of information about tobacco and e-cigarette use. Students are encouraged to use healthier choices while learning about the dangers of smoking, chewing tobacco, and vaping tobacco products. Next is our vaping Know the Truth program, which is a digital learning program which gives students core knowledge about the dangers of using e-cigarettes and other, other resources to help young people quit if they already vape. Another program is our Adolescent Substance Abuse Program, or ASAP, programs in two different locations, one in Greensboro and the other in High Point, which offers both academic and substance intervention, prevention services, including curriculum instruction in a structured classroom setting. Last but not least is our Lifestyles Program, which is a six-hour substance abuse education and early intervention program for students and parents. The program is designed to educate students and their parents regarding issues of alcohol and other drug abuse about healthy family relationships. Finally, our next steps include enhanced K-12 vaping prevention, focusing on further employee develop, further employee development, parent information sessions, and resources for classroom lessons and succession resources for students that want to quit vaping. Another is substance use prevention session for parents, incorporation, in cooperation with mental health coordinators and specialists to provide family-friendly resources highlighting signs of use and how to stop. Last but not least is increased utilization of the ASAP and Lifestyle Programs through coordination with school social workers and school administrators with high numbers of disciplined referrals. Attendance. In September 2017, North Carolina Early Childhood Foundation released a report to the North Carolina State Board of Education outlining the state of chronic absenteeism policies and practices in North Carolina. That included why chronic absence matters for third-grade reading and why addressing it is an actionable strategy for improving literacy outcomes. Why it's an effective measure of school quality for student success. Chronic absence rates in North Carolina, including data from each school district, disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and gender, and the current state-level landscape in North Carolina around nine key readiness factors that can be, that can set the stage for an active campaign to reduce chronic absenteeism. In the graph here, you can see over the past three years, the district's chronic absenteeism rate has increased significantly. As you may notice from the graph, while enrollment numbers across GCS has decreased each school year, the number of students chronically absent has increased, causing the rate to increase also. During the 1920 school year, the district underwent many unexpected changes in an effort to ensure school and safe, school and student safety measures were in place to combat the spread of COVID-19. And as a result, the changes that took place were effective in March sixteenth, 2019. As you can see here, approximately one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven students were quarantined this past academic year, which had a significant impact on the chronic absenteeism rate.
I think, um, here it's important to remember, you remember as contact tracing things kind of changed and practices changed. So a student could have been exposed and isolated and then found to be in close contact or gotten sick themselves. So, I mean, there could have been like circumstances that led to as many as like eighteen days of isolation plus quarantine. So as the rules changed and the contract tracing, you know, some, at some points, there were long waits, lates of time while that happened. And so, um, quarantines are not the only reason that we have increases in chronic absenteeism, but it is definitely a factor when we think about the isolations and the quarantines and how that impacted, um, student absences over, over the course of that time span seen there on the slide. Sorry.
Yeah, to build on that point, transitioning back to in-person learning and maintaining consistent engagement in schools has been a concern this school year across GCS and across the nation. GCS's chronic absenteeism rate has increased over the past two years due to various implications of the COVID-19 pandemic, including families who are displaced, sick, moving across counties and states. School support staff have been diligent in responding to the individual needs of chronically absent students in providing resources of support and implementing trained interventions of support, such as parent notifications, connect ed calls, home visits, parent meetings, class and school-wide incentives, facilitating small group sessions for families and students. This year, our Tennis Works contract partners have spent time with over twenty GCS schools to explore school needs, attendance goals, and considerations for reducing chronic absenteeism in the next academic year.
Winston?
So there have been comments various times that like we haven't even made school attendance compulsory, which, I mean, I've heard people say it and then perpetuate it as like truth. Can you speak to how our policies have changed? It's not just quarantining, but have there been, or, or practice changes during this period about how absenteeism is counted or required or, I mean, dispel? If that's a myth, dispel it.
Yeah, I think, um, I mean, the, the three, six, and ten-day letters are practically, I mean, we have to do that and we have to report.
Right.
Like we're, right, is that?
Yeah. Statutory in the State Board of Education sets the, excuse me.
What I can say is that as we get into the, um, the procedure that accompanies the policy, it is the right time to train, to make sure that new staff have that information. But we have followed what's in statute throughout, you know, regardless of the reason behind, I mean, the absence. Um, we, we're legally obligated to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
So the notion that we haven't required students to attend school is false.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anita?
How do we handle, account for, take control of, um, the during the school day absences? They may show up for first, may show up for fourth, and disappear in between. How do we account for that?
Well, I think that's what I was referring to in the training of the procedures that accompany the policy. I also think as we have one card become more of a part of the culture, we're, we're better able to do that. So, I mean, in terms of, of right now, when attendance is taken and reported at the school level by period, you know, to your point, how we assign three and six to ten-day letters are only if you're out the whole day, not by the period.
Right, and there, there are numerous instances of showing up for part of the day, then missing, and then showing up, then missing. And what I'm hearing from teachers is, how can I teach to that? Because I'm constantly having to catch up students who still won't come class yesterday. I mean, they came to school, they came to Class A, but they didn't come to Class B.
And again, I think the training, the awareness, the how and when we're monitoring the attendance and reporting it has to, it's not just the policy that's going to fix that.
Right.
But it, I do want to say you will see that teachers are, um, reporting this because we have significant thousands of students who are being, uh, disciplined, receiving referrals, and suspensions, uh, for attendance. So you'll see that in a few slides.
Isn't that kind of counterproductive?
Well, it's against your policy.
I mean.
That you just passed, but this is a constant reminder. And it's one thing Jill is working on for us that every fall, because of so many new principals, and we had about twenty a year, that we go over the most critical policies again so that we can make certain that all principals know what your policies are. We pass a policy, we train the current principals, but then we don't have a good way of bringing everyone else up to date. So Jill and the chiefs have been working on, what are the most critical issues? And they're going to do legal training every fall.
So, um, I can come to school every day, but if I'm not a fan of my third-period class and I don't go, except when there's a test given, I can still pass that class.
You can pass a class if you master the information, which is what we want to hold them accountable for. In the same way, we shouldn't grade students on discipline. Attendance should be related to grade as it relates to, do you know the material or not? Now, if a student, um, you know, is getting As on every test, um, but they were quarantined, for example, and they were out for eighteen days, they should still be able to pass, uh, the class because they mastered the materials. So the state, many states have gotten away from seat time requirements to push for mastery of learning.
I, I get that, but they're on the campus somewhere.
There's my.
They're on the school campus somewhere. They're just not sitting in a class.
Yes, and what I'm saying is, we are keeping track, not as consistently. I think, I think what Dr. Oakley is saying, she cannot vouch for all five thousand teachers or at the high school level, all two thousand teachers right now and say to the board, yes, every single one of them does this. But most of the high school teachers are keeping track of attendance and you can see that is, see that clearly by the absentee data that we see in the discipline referrals. So we'll bring, we'll show you that shortly.
Okay, no more questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something to what we're talking about. We're talking about going beyond just policy development. And so one of the things that we're going to be doing in this next school year is actually engaging the schools, I think about twenty schools with the top, or the highest levels of chronic absenteeism in a peer learning network and a campaign so that they can become ambassadors to other schools across the district on some of the strategies that have actually worked.
But, but you can't just look at overall attendance.
Correct.
Somehow we need to be able to see class attendance.
Yes, ma'am.
And look at that issue and see if it's really an issue or if I'm just hearing from teachers, they think it's an issue.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I mean, that.
Well, can you clarify, we can see classroom attendance?
Yes, we can, yeah, and that's a part of our strategy.
I've seen, I, I know we can, but my question is not, can we see it? My question is, what are we doing about it?
Yes, ma'am, we're utilizing that on the ground in real time as best as possible. Of course, we can't be everywhere all the time ensuring that every principal and school leader is enforcing these policies. But what we can do is highlight the best practices and then transport them to the schools that are struggling the most.
All right, Pat?
Well, I just hope that Cone Health and all the health directors that we heard from really take this to heart, these statistics that we're looking at. I know they have had our best interest, but we sat here for months and weeks and, you know, we're seeing the scores, we see the outcomes. Everything that you've got in your slides is all related to COVID and kids not being in school. So I hope that they're listening and people really, um, balance all of this. And, um, you know, you see the absences, and that's directly related to, to testing and achievement. I mean, we all know that, so anyway, it's just interesting to see. In hindsight, we, we do get some clarity and I hope that they're, um, well, all of those officials, we, we heard from them all and they had, they were very specific. And I think that I just hope we balance the, the data we have now versus, you know, shutting down schools.
Thank you, your point is well received. Thank you.
Dana, one more.
Anita?
Do we have statistics on the percentages of what is, um, COVID quarantine-related and what is just, I didn't go to school last year, so I'm going this year?
It's in the few slides coming up.
Yes, we have that. All right, this has come up a little bit in the conversation so far. Not a lot to share here, but important information. Due to the implementation of the Educator's Handbook and COVID-19 pandemic in 2019 and 20, full-year comparison data unfortunately is not available. Um, also, the Department of Public Instruction has not formally approved preliminary 21-22 discipline data, uh, so they are subject to change. Um, however, when compared to all other student groups, the preliminary data for the 21-22 school years consistently shows disparities with Black students and students with disabilities.
And just to remind the board, Educator's Handbook is how discipline incidents are recorded at the school level. So when an incident occurs, when they go in and enter that, and it syncs with Power School.
Yeah, and I just want to also say, I often hear the school administrators aren't reporting the discipline, getting rid of it. You can't get rid of the referrals that the teachers put in through Educator's Handbook. That's one of the reasons we went through an electronic, went to an electronic system. So while one may disagree with how the administrator handled discipline, there is no way for them to delete the referrals that teachers put into the handbook.
In the same line, sharing more data during the 21-22, Black. In the same line, sharing more data, during the 21-22, Black, Black male and female students made up 68%, or 20,108 of the total number of referrals issued. Close to 5,500 referrals that Black students receive resulted in out-of-school suspension. Almost 5,800 referrals resulted in in-school suspension. These numbers far exceeded their white and Hispanic peers. Although not as many as Black students, students with disabilities also received a greater number of referrals than their peers. Although it appears that the district has experienced an increase in the number of referrals over, overall, and by student group, keep in mind that the Educator's Handbook that Dr. Oakley mentioned began in 2020 to '21, and all students begin, or began remote instruction in March 2020. And over the past five years, Black students have consistently received more referrals than any other groups within Guilford County.
Can you tell how, these are referrals. Do we know how many are repeat offenders? I mean, a lot of times I hear...
Not in this presentation, but I'm sure we can get that information.
You hear it's generally a small percentage of students that continue to repeat negative behavior. So I don't, you know, I think we should know, are these unique individuals? Because it does make a difference. If we haven't addressed a student that is having challenges, or is, and we haven't changed, and they continue to, it kind of like skews these numbers, because it's generally, it's one student doing, being referred 20 times, or one student being referred 10 times. So you really don't, it's not one referral per student, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You're talking about unique referrals, not repetitive referrals.
I'm talking about individuals. Like, if I have a student that's challenged.
Yes, we call them unique referrals.
Okay.
An individual referral is unique to a, to one student. And they will be presenting that during a discipline presentation. We actually have the data on how many students received out-of-school suspension, which is, I can tell you off the top of my head, about 8,000, which is more than 10% of the student population. So it's not a handful. Students are being suspended at the highest rates we've seen in five years. We also have that for in-school suspension and for referrals. So you'll receive that during a more in-depth presentation on student discipline.
I just wanted to say that that is just, I mean, we constantly hear that principals are told not to suspend, and that's so inconsistent with this data here. Because 10% of our student population is a significant number of students. So I, you know, hope that we will, you know, continue to look at, you know, student discipline is just an issue across the country, but these inequities and disparities have not been given the curiosity and the investigation that they need. We received an email from a father who's, you know, was talking about drug use in a part of the county, and said, everyone knows that it's going on, and some kids get a slap on the wrist, or get, you know, just sort of get a lecture, and other kids end up with a record. And so, so it's disturbing.
Betty?
Also, with the numbers, that's very alarming. I know there are some schools have ISS, some have different names for the rooms that they have kids to go in to chill out, and those are counted as ISS, meaning in-school suspension versus out-of-school suspension. So with a number that is shown, it looked like none of the schools have ISS. And that is something I think we need to look at, to see how many schools have an ISS program or in-school suspension program inside the school that's keeping kids inside the school.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay. Go ahead. Dr. Robinson.
Okay. Moving ahead, for referrals for drug and alcohol and tobacco use, you can see here that the number of referrals received for the possession and use of tobacco has increased. We have not experienced a lot of change over the past three years with the possession and use of alcohol, but the work continues.
Yeah. I just have a clarification.
Yes, Ms. Herbie has a question.
Okay.
In regard to, over the years, when students were at home, you weren't capturing any type of discipline data. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct. So I'm trying to be clear.
So 2021 is not shown, and 1920 has an asterisk that shows that there were some months that were impacted by, I mean, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't...
They're not like years, because they weren't full school years. So we tried to give you the pre-pandemic, the last full school year, 2018-19, compared to 2021-2022. Because 1920, we left school on March 13th, I believe. So the two comparable years are 2018-19 to 2021-22, which is consistent with national data on substance use. We're trying to show that substance use is increasing among teenagers. A lot of this, I believe, is vaping.
No, but I'm also going back to the suspension data. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes.
Like, these aren't suspensions.
I know. I'm going back to the suspension data.
That's not suspension data either, Kim. The last slide is referrals. I think Dina was asking that question, too. You get sent to the office, you don't get suspended.
Can you go back a couple of slides, please, when you're talking about suspension or student?
Okay.
And you mentioned 2017. Give me that slide again.
Can you, can you show the referral slide?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, discipline totals. So then you're saying that referrals is not...
No, this one does have OSS and ISS on it.
Okay.
It has, starts with number of referrals, with 29,692.
Right.
The number of those, the percentage of those referrals that resulted in OSS is about 25%, or 7,539. The percentage of referrals that resulted in ISS of that same 29,000 is approximately 9,000, which is about 30%.
Okay.
So about 55% of all of these referrals ended up in a in-school or out-of-school suspension.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. You are talking about suspension data.
And I think that's an important point to make, because the narrative that's been spread is, no one's being suspended, and principals are being told not to suspend.
Right.
All of the data show that is false.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane, and then Linda.
This is probably going to be a complicated question, in that just this week, there was reports, which we already knew, that menthol cigarettes are targeted, targeted, targeted in the marketing to African-Americans. And so, in looking at your, your prevention programs, which was a whole bunch of slides back, are you considering the fact that African-Americans are more likely to be targeted to more addictive cigarettes, which are your menthol cigarettes? And, or do you see that African-American kids are more likely to violate policy?
We don't have the type of vaping, like, you know what I mean? We don't have that level. I do think keeping an eye on the research across the nation is something that we can do. I don't think that we can get to the level of the type of, you know, within that level of detail within the offense.
I understand. But when you're talking about trying to have conversations with families, because, again, many slides back, you talked about a program where you involve counseling, I assume, for both parents and the teens, right, or the kids?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But in looking at that, then you have to look at that is broader than, oh, just that the child came to school with cigarettes. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. And so I'm just asking that, that we, that how you look at that, you realize that it's beyond, it may be beyond just this kid violating this rule. It could be environmental. It's certain, not could be, it is. Because if menthol cigarettes are being marketed to a specific population, which we know has been since the 50s, then this family, this household, it might be greater than just the kid violating the rule. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am. We understand that our approach and solutions can't be a one-size-fits-all for every community, and we have to take in consideration the messaging that's going out to communities, so that we can begin countering those messages with effective programming.
Thank you. And then I know you don't probably have the time to do this, but I think that because we do have identified offenders, meaning your tobacco companies, they may have dollars where they're wanting to do certain things to try to clean up their act. And I don't know if we have the time or the energy to look at those dollars that might help us with our student population.
Most of those are routed through state grants that we do apply for. So that's usually how those are funneled.
Okay. I was just suggesting.
Thank you. Yeah. In terms of our next steps, continue training in partnership with mental health supports here in GCS. Our school-based attendance goals, with the support of Attendance Works and other collaborative partnerships with community organizations, and intervention and support programs utilizing our school's social workers and counselors.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Linda and Diane.
As it relates to our communities, I mean, the comment that the kids, if they're cutting class, they're on the campus somewhere, not necessarily so. And I think it's important that we somehow or another, through community outreach, or through Dr. Kay's office, or something, that you reach out to the communities to have them know that we want the kids to come back to campus, or to not leave campus. And so through neighborhood, talking to the police department about, a lot of our, in the city of Greensboro at least, you have community, neighborhood, community meetings. And so that's a place where if, you know, somebody sees a kid that looks like they should be on campus, that they can at least, you know, have someplace to call, whether it's back to the school and say, hey, I see one of your kids. Did you know, I mean, and I think that the cameras will help, because if the cameras maybe will be a deterrent, that kids, if kids know that they can be seen leaving campus, which means they can be identified, they may or may not care, but that might help. But I do think somehow or another, getting in touch with, looking at your high schools that are near communities, like, you know, Andrews or Smith, where you can say to that perimeter around them, have a conversation with either the neighborhood association meetings, or even the stores, who may or may not want these kids in their, in their establishment during school hours. So however that works out to communicate that, that we want the kids back on campus, if they leave campus.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Linda?
I want to, there's not a page number, so I want to go back to this one, about the tobacco drug. And my issue is, when you say tobacco, are you truly meaning, are you just talking nicotine? Are you truly talking tobacco? Because I think there needs to be, you know, with cigarettes and, you know, chewing tobacco, there's all sorts of research out there. And I think people understand that it's not healthy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Their problem is they're addicted to it, and there's plenty of people that want it, that will never, ever be able to get away from it, once you're totally hooked on it. However, vaping is another issue. Vaping came in big about seven years ago or so, and it really hit the middle school, and I had to deal with it with my own children. And what I was always taught, told, because it was new, it won't hurt you. Okay? I don't think there's bubble lungs from this now. I think there are things that have shown to be very bad about vaping. Also, the quantity of nicotine that you can get through a vape is much higher than you can get through cigarettes. I mean, you can get some serious... And so, educating parents, I just don't feel like there's an education program for parents, or a lot out there about how addicting, and the use for vapes with drugs also. So for me, tobacco, are we really talking tobacco use, or are we really talking nicotine? So I'm guessing, because, have we seen an increase in smoking cigarettes or chewing tobacco? Or what we're seeing is an increase in nicotine use through vapes?
Yeah. Our data show, first, I'll just say, we understand that the landscape for substance use and abuse is varied and complex, and it's forever-changing. But the data shows us that the increase has been mostly in the area of vaping e-cigarettes, using these kind of new, more sophisticated devices. We do have programming that incorporates parents and families into this educational process, because they too need to understand the changing landscape of substance use. But we have programs that incorporates family input, and students, and teachers.
Yeah. Because I'm going to tell you, I don't know how many times my son told me it was harmless. I did qualify that it was not, and I didn't care what he thought, he was not doing it. So...
To your point, one of our programs that incorporates families is actually called Know the Truth, because we have to combat those issues of misinformation.
And I just really don't think it's out there enough publicly, that people truly understand vaping has, in my book, even higher potential of being worse than cigarettes.
That's right.
Thank you. Deborah, and then Anita.
And to that end, they're actually looking at a ban on the Juul e-cigarettes on a federal level. So whoever you know, whoever you want to call, whoever you want to email, that'll support that action at a federal level. That would be immensely helpful, because those are some of the very highest-containing nicotine e-cigarettes that are available. So anybody who wants to put that out there, please support that effort. Healthcare, thanks you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
If, if a student has a device, an e-cigarette, whatever, I don't know much about Juul, but if they have a device on our campus and they're caught with it, what do we do with it?
We confiscate it.
Do they ever get it back?
I don't believe so. No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. This slide is just to draw your attention to our procedure for disciplinary actions and reviews has been revised as of 2020, in that this involves a due process that we're working on ways to educate our community about.
How many cases have there been? Because we were told it would stop the entire discipline process if we implemented. So how many cases of, how many incidents of parent appeals have there been?
Four? Yeah.
Four. I'll make sure everyone hears that.
Thank you.
Title IX.
All right. All right. Like all other school systems and districts, GCS adheres to the 1972 Education Amendments Act, known as Title IX, which prohibits sex-based discrimination in any school or any other education program that receives federal funding from the government. So this is just to kind of draw your attention to our ongoing program. We, I believe that we will talk about this in closed session. But going to the next slide, here's just some key, high-level data points, highlighting some of the work that we've put in to educate our community and keep our students safe. We have, I won't read all of this, but you can see... We have, I won't read all of this, but you can see here, we've conducted a number of different trainings across the district targeting students, staff, including principals, assistant principals, as well as addressing the cultural prevention, not just Title IX compliance, but also making sure that we understand how we can protect our students from sexual assault. Some of our next steps include the Title IX Sexual Assault Prevention Training provided by the North Carolina Coalition Against Sexual Assault. We're going to be onboarding a new executive director for Title IX and a number of investigators into our newly established Title IX office within the Student Services Department. We're also conducting a biannual review of our policies and procedures to ensure alignment and compliance with federal law and state law, and continued training on preventing and addressing harassment based on gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation.
Any questions in this section? We're going to shift away from Student Services.
Yeah, we have one, Diane, or two, Diane and Deborah.
Are we, are you, will your office be responsible for training of staff? One of the things that has bothered me over the time that I've been on this floor is, and maybe I'm wrong, but it appears that particularly whenever a staff person who has done something to a student, that the time period sometimes has been very long. And part of that is that nobody said anything. And, you know, and I understand, we live in a culture still where some people feel it's not my problem, I'm not going to get involved, but when it comes to our responsibility to these parents and their kids, how do we make it imperative to staff that they have to say, you know, they see something, they need to say something, or if the student sees something, they need to say something?
Yes, ma'am. I think that goes to our concerted effort to really develop a high-class, high-functioning Title IX office within Student Services so that we can be more timely in our investigations and resolutions of these issues. We understand that justice delayed is oftentimes justice denied, and we don't want to do that. Our students and families deserve better, and our students deserve to be safe, yeah.
Deborah? A consistent concern that I've had come from some parents and students that have been, or have reported assault inside their schools, is that there is no separation of the potential victim with the potential assaulter once something is reported. It's something I would like to have on the radar for this Title IX committee or office when they do get in and, y'all steal Karen Ellis from me, and she gets to work in organizing everything, is how we would like to address our, I guess, policy or pattern after a complaint is lodged with the students to address contact between them.
Attorney Wilson, if you can explain how, that used to be the case before Mrs. DeVos took over U.S. Department of Education and changed the guidelines.
And the guidelines have just recently changed again yesterday, so we are in the process of analyzing them yet again. But the bottom line is that the purpose of a Title IX office and the importance of Ms. Ellis is to make sure that we follow whatever guidelines come from whatever federal agency is currently overseeing Title IX, whatever their philosophy be, and that we zealously protect our kids from any violations of their rights. So we take Title IX seriously regardless of the process, and we will follow the process, whatever it is. It dovetails sometimes with our discipline policies. Sometimes the processes under Title IX have nothing to do with discipline. They have to do with keeping kids safe, keeping kids comfortable, providing kids the supports they need. So there's a whole lot more to Title IX than discipline, and that's really important to keep in mind, and it's going to be so, so wonderful to have a person dedicated to the 70,000 students you have who can encounter issues that they have concerns about.
Right, and we may be able to move more quickly. Remember that what Attorney Wilson shared is that we have to also start hiring investigators is next to help, because as you move more quickly through the process, you can separate students more quickly.
Yeah, and that's to Jill's point, is, you know, we've got to provide a certain comfort level, otherwise kids aren't going to learn. You're not going to learn if that person is sitting right there next to you and something related happened, just as much as you're not going to learn if you're sick. So, yeah.
The post, the post-DeVos changes look like they will be very much more reflective of how things operate in K-12 schools. The regulations that we have been working with for the last six or seven years were really designed kind of more with date rape in mind, and they are very complicated, but they don't apply very well to third graders. And so some of the new guidance that has come out just this week will be very helpful.
Is there a place to look at it, maybe a gist of that?
We're still in the process of analyzing it. We'll be happy to update you. We can make that part of something we do in the future, but it's way too early to do that yet. They haven't even finished issuing everything.
All right.
But it is moving in a really good way, so that we both protect our students and don't hold up getting to some real remedies that help.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to shift to Dr. Stevens with some updates on student assignment.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I only have four slides, so I'll be very quick. So each year, Dr. Contreras asks our student assignment office to informally monitor the enrollment experiences of our potential GCS families. And what we have noticed is that many of our families have vastly different experiences when they initially register or begin their enrollment process with our district. And now, you might think, well, that's not completely surprising considering we have 126 schools. However, we know that our families are experiencing, have experiences that are not at the GCS gold standard, if you will. And so, which means that some of the experiences that they have have not been pleasant, especially when we think about enrollment as being the first impression that families a lot of times receive for our district. And in the words of Dr. Contreras, she says to us and reminds us constantly that we can do better and that our families deserve better. And so currently, when families come to our district to register, they can do it one of two ways. They can go online using SchoolMint, or they can go into the, go to their school, their student's attendance zone school. And as a part of the enrollment process, they have to show documentation, which is proof of the date of birth and their legal name, proof of residency, they have to show that they are a student in good standing, provide immunization records, and then also submit proof of their health assessment. And then once all of the registration documents have been received, then each school's data manager will verify the information before officially enrolling the student. So in looking at the informal monitoring, what we've noticed is that there is a need for us to have a centralized enrollment process that will help assist families with registration and enrollment. Some of our families, as I mentioned, experience inequitable enrollment periods, which could range from one day to two months, which we should not allow in our district. A student should not wait two months, have to wait two months before enrolling. And then also, we've noticed that our district's data entry and reporting processes are often inconsistent and inaccurate, which creates a lot of extra time with cleaning the data and making sure that our data are accurate when we began to report out. There's research to support that a centralized enrollment system with a fair and consistent process will make the enrollment and registration process more efficient for school districts and a more pleasurable experience for our families. Dr. Contreras asked us to reach out to school districts that are within the Council of Great City Schools and research some of those who have operational enrollment centers, and we found approximately 30 or so. We did reach out to some of those districts, and we received a response from four, and that's through the work of Dr. Slade. He worked very hard to contact a lot of these school districts across the country, and so he was able to interview four of the Council of Great City Schools, school districts that are with, are part of the Council of Great City Schools, and those include Baltimore City, Nashville Public, Denver Public, and Omaha Public Schools. And some of the themes that emerged from that interview process or key findings were that the enrollment centers were developed to address things like facilitating placements of students. They provided temporary assistance during the pandemic. They were able to provide family support for a variety of things that we currently don't do consistently at each of our schools, because, well, for a variety of reasons, I would imagine. Also, these enrollment centers were created in these particular schools to, or school districts to improve the data quality and consistency. And then also, they realized, these districts realized that there is inequitable enrollment procedures that were currently happening in their school districts, and so they used enrollment centers to help satisfy some of those concerns that they had. The other common theme that emerged from the interviews is that the enrollment centers are housed at district offices and also at identified schools.
If I may add, in this district, other than enrollment grades, like sixth grade, kindergarten, ninth grade, you go to the school to enroll. So if someone isn't there, they can ask you to keep coming back to enroll. We also know that sometimes, based on who you know, you can get into a school inconsistent with board policies, because there are 128 registrars and data managers, they don't all know McKinney-Vintel laws, they don't all know the law surrounding foster students. I will never forget Board Member McGregor sharing that some of our refugee students were sitting home for two and three months without getting help. This process, which this is the first district I've worked in where every school enrolls their own student, will make sure that students are enrolled quickly, they are enrolled fairly, and that they cannot be dropped from the school without going through the enrollment system. And that happens as well, that students are told to leave, and unless someone calls us, we have no idea that a school may be removing a student from the roster. So this ensures equity of access to a free and public education.
Thank you, Linda.
So this center, where would it be located? I mean.
Keep going.
Yes, so, yeah. Because, you know, I'm, all right, I'll wait.
Okay, so to Dr. Contreras's point, what we are recommending is that we continue, as she has directed us, to the process of developing these centralized enrollment centers so that we can offer families a quote-unquote "one-stop-shop," if you will, which would include equitable enrollment practices, transportation services possibly, counseling and English-language learners services, and then also support for our most vulnerable students, which would include our students that are students in transition and our foster care students as they begin the enrollment process. This will simplify the enrollment experiences for families or that families are currently experiencing. And so for the next steps, we're thinking that we may need five additional administrators to help manage, to help with management of the enrollment centers, and we're also looking at maybe the registrar's positions as additional support. We're thinking that we would have regional offices, so five regional offices, but we've not determined an actual location yet, but they would be situated regionally throughout the district.
And in the central region.
And in the central region.
So each of the five sites, one northeast, one northwest, one southeast, one southwest, and then one centrally, would have an administrator. The registrars would no longer be in the schools, but they would be in the enrollment centers along with at least a counselor that has familiarity with international transcripts or students who have never had formal schooling and who come in at 13, 15 years old with how we place them. We can also eventually place transportation specialists there, so when you enroll, you set up your transportation immediately. We can have a nurse at each of the enrollment systems, and this is how most of them are set up around the country, to help you with your immunizations, where you can go based on where you live. So again, it would be a one-stop-shop with a timeline of starting in January, because our enrollment begins in January, with one somewhere in the city of Greensboro, one somewhere in the city of High Point, and then adding three others the following year.
Is your, as long as the women parents? Oh, yes. All right. All right, so with kindergarten, would kindergarteners have to go here to register? Because right now, I think they register at their homeschool.
So yes, we would want kindergarteners, we would want all students to go to one of the enrollment centers to register their fam, them and their families.
Okay, does that not put a burden on families if we have two locations? And I don't know what the volume of kindergarteners we enroll every year, all these kindergarten parents would have to take the initiative to get to the, one of these enrollment centers.
Yes, most of them are online, though. You come to the enrollment center to bring your proof of address and immunizations. This is not an imposition for families. Actually, what is an imposition is being told to go to one school after catching a bus there and then being told, this isn't your homeschool. Then you go somewhere else, and then to trans, when you try to set up transportation, you have to go to yet another office or call another office. So this is much simpler for parents, and you can actually go to any of the five. So if you live in Greensboro but work in High Point, you can go to the High Point office to register your children. But these are in most school districts the size in the nation, and they're much more convenient for parents.
And it doesn't take the place, just to be clear, like kindergarten of the kindergarten orientation and the open house and the welcome to school. So once the items are uploaded online, or if they need extra assistance and they go to the center, they still have their, well, you know, their welcome to school when school opens. And usually with kindergarten, they do something in March, and then they do something again in early August before they're in the door.
If you already have children in the school system, and you've got them registered, and so this is a sibling coming up, I still have to go to the enrollment center to enroll this child, my sibling child? All right, I have.
For a kindergartner.
You know, I have a first grader, a second grader, they're already in. Now I have to go somewhere to enroll my kindergartner.
Well, you already have to go to the school to enroll your kindergartner.
Well, but it's not going to be the school, it's going to be at one place, somewhere in Greensboro, one place somewhere in High Point. I mean, how many, how many kindergarteners do we enroll in?
Six thousand.
Six thousand, so we have 6,000 people trying to get to one spot.
No, to five spots.
Oh.
And the other kids don't have to re-enroll?
I know the other kids, but I'm being, putting myself in the parent's point. I have to, I've got kids already in the system, I'm a legitimate parent that you've already vetted me, you know I'm there. However, for my kindergartner, I'm going to have to make a trip to a particular place to enroll my child. I'm just bringing up the issue, I mean, I understand if we've got situations that are not, that have challenges to the situation, all right, whether it be, you know, people that have come, like, you know, immigrants, they have come and they're not, they've been coming, they're getting assistance, they're foster children, they're, any of that, I understand that that gets hard to deal with. I just, the average parent, I'm not sure, and I don't know what the volume of this need really is, but I do understand, I'm just not sure I need five places and how parents are going to. I need five places and how parents are gonna.
Well, first, I just want to say, we're not presenting this for you to vote on, so you'll have a lot of time to go through this. I would recommend that you speak to most of the other districts our size that already do this for the purpose of fulfilling your responsibility to ensure free and appropriate education. This is not just foster children or children who are in foster care, excuse me, are not the only children who have difficulty enrolling. It is incredibly difficult to enroll in the Guilford County schools. And again, we have to get proximate to the problem to understand how difficult it is for thousands of our parents to enroll every single day. And when you have 128 people who are doing this job, or 126, you can't ensure that they're getting equitable access, that things are being done fairly. And we have hundreds and hundreds of kids who are delayed access for more than 10 days to school in violation of the law. So again, this is moving us into the 21st century here and practices that are employed by many other districts. And I think, again, you'll have the opportunity to go and visit enrollment centers across the nation.
Thank you, Cam, and then Deborah.
Well, congratulations for thinking about this. Because I was one of those persons that brought five people to be enrolled in school. And I understand the beauty of having an enrollment center. And my kids were delayed. And I didn't understand that, because I brought all the paperwork and I was like, why can't they start school today? You have everything you need. And they were sitting at home too long. So I totally understand the beauty of having an enrollment center. But will these enrollment centers be expanded to? It's under the student assignment office? Or, like, I want to understand, like, the structure here. Is this part of student assignment or not?
Yes, student assignment would be in charge, in charge of it, but then the early stages of planning. So they don't have a structure yet, but it falls under student assignment.
Okay, so the schoolment process doesn't allow you to apply for transportation?
Dr. Slade.
They had paper when I came here, so.
Yeah, so in schoolment, it's just the registration process. The transportation department has a separate process for transportation requests. But if you're in an enrollment center, you can get all of that taken care of in one sitting opposed to trying to navigate multiple platforms for multiple sources.
And that is part of the issue, right? Because if schoolment can just take me right to transportation, like one-stop shop, I don't know if it could be upgraded to do such a thing with system. Because that is a problem, sending me to one system, then I got to go to another system.
It's about the interface of the systems. And part of the problem is the state's Power School system, which is, we, they can upgrade it for us, but it's not an easy task to get them to allow us to use separate systems that interface with Power Schools. So we've been struggling with this since we implemented schoolment.
Okay, and the final question. What is an affidavit of student in good standing?
About 25 years ago, there was a case that we had actually in Guilford County that worked its way through the courts about how to deal with a student who has adult living parents. So the law presumes you are domiciled with your parent. But for some reason, has, has come to our system, not with that parent, but with another adult who is not a parent. And the affidavit was developed by the legislature to react to certain circumstances where a student has living parents but is living with another adult because of medical crisis, abandonment, and there are certain legal, legal criteria that must be sworn to in order for a non-parent adult to enroll a student.
So it's just, it's not for everyone? Okay, because the way it's presented here, I thought it was for everybody.
Now, every student, every student, every parent enrolling a student from another system does file an affidavit of good standing to say, my student is not currently expelled. My student is not currently. Because if you are expelled in another North Carolina system, this system can honor that expulsion. And if you're expelled from a, a school in another state, this school can, this is all pursuant to statutes. It's all in the law. It's on 391 and in that general area of statute.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah.
Linda, just maybe to give you an idea of what works or what we're doing now. In the beginning of this past school year, I enrolled one in kindergarten and had my stepdaughter transfer from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to here. And, you know, that, I'm going to just say it because it's, it's to the point, but the kindergarten enrollment, we were at least a little familiar with because we've already been through it once, but it still required three trips to the school. The high school enrollment was a nightmare because we're pulling different pieces of paper from all sorts of different places. There were five or six trips downtown to Weaver Academy. We, you know, we wound up shuttling paperwork from one school in Winston to one school here. And if we, you know, if it had not been my husband and I, if it had just been a single parent situation like what I grew up in, it would have been, it would not have been doable, because all of it, of course, had to be done during working hours. And if there would have been one place where we could have gone and done all of this for every grade level and they would have had a set list of requirements that we could have just gone down checklist style, hours would have been saved. Because we offer such an array, especially at the high school level, of what you can partake in. The fact that our schools handle everything individually can be very, very, very overwhelming. And this is for someone with, you know, about all the resources you could ask for.
And the schools add forms when they're not supposed to. So you can go to one school and they'll say, we want you to fill out these extra three, four, or five forms. If you have three kids, you know, and whenever we catch this, I tell them, and I've experienced it myself. And I say, this is a student enrolled in the district. I'm not completing five more forms. Go to Power School and find it. And then we try to fix it. But the only way to truly fix it is by having centers that make the process equitable for all parents. It is completely overwhelming.
And I would just add that, think of the benefits for students who are coming with an IEP or with services and the amount of time and access. 504 plans are students who come and they have a four-year-old. And they're saying, well, how can I get to pre-K? Right now, we have to say, sorry, you have to go to Market Street. Or, you know, like, there's just diff, it would just, I think, there's, there's many, many benefits that are not just captured here in terms of getting service to families.
To Linda's point, I think what she's saying, if I already have a third grader and I know I'm going to have a kindergartner at that same school, why can't I just go to the school where I know my kid is going to attend and still enroll them instead of going back to the enrollment center? I do understand that rationale. Because if I already got a kid there, I know that's my zone school. The rest of my kids, I should just be able to walk into my, my school now, because I've established relationship and enroll the rest of the kids. I do understand that.
Because we still have a responsibility to collect information, proof of address. Just because you're enrolled in a school doesn't mean you live there.
I'm still going to provide that, though.
Yes, but you now have a bifurcated system. You have, and you can't ensure the equity in that building. And then you have siblings who don't live in that neighborhood, who the younger sibling comes. We do have sibling preference in the district, but a school can tell you, this isn't your homeschool, even though the sibling attends there. They can tell you to leave. An enrollment center can stop that and make sure you get a sibling preference, because your student is, you have another sibling enrolled there. Now, Mrs. Jenkins was a counselor there, counselor in this district. She can tell you what happens in the schools.
We have Pat and then Betty. Oh, you're good, okay, Pat.
Yeah, I mean, I like the concept. I just, I'm curious about the efficacy and the implementa, like, I'd like to see one. And are there, like, hundreds of parents waiting in line, like an airport, or is it scheduled and staggered out? I mean, I do think about, you know, if you've got two of them and thousands of kids, there's a lot of very detailed scheduling that's going to have to happen, and who's doing that?
Yeah, so I can tell you, because I used to run one. And this was before you had all of the online processes. Most of your information is online now. So you submit it online. You can make appointments during, so if you enroll kindergartners, what districts do you say kindergarten is during the month of January? And so during these 30 days, you can go to an enrollment center just to bring the last piece of information. You can do that by appointment during that month. What happens is, because you have slow periods as well, the enrollment center is open seven days a week. And say, Monday and Tuesday, they're open from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. But then on Wednesday through Friday, they're open 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. So you, districts do this differently, but it's based on, you don't enroll all the students at the same time. You say kindergarten is this month. Middle school is the next month. Then there's a transfer period.
Yeah, I just, sometimes visualization helps. And that's, and that was going to be my follow-up. Are there going to be extended hours? Because I think that's wonderful for working families. I mean, anyway, I like the concept. I just was thinking about the, how it, yeah, how it's implemented. I'd love to, so can we, is there one close by here in North Carolina? We can go walk up and watch them do it?
We didn't, we didn't really specifically look in North Carolina. We were looking mostly at the Council of Great City Schools. But I think, and Dr. Slade, if you want to come back up, I think Nashville was the closest. But we can do some additional research.
Seven hours, we could do it.
Did you find any?
Yeah, so Nashville was the closest district that really had the model where.
Closest council district.
Council district that had the similar model where they had ample staffing. They had multiple centers in various regions of their district. And so when we spoke with them, in comparison to the other districts, they just, their, their, their model was a lot different. They had 32 staff members. They had different centers and quadrants of the districts. So a lot of the other districts may have had one center. And we're talking districts with ranging between 53,000 students up to 92,000 students. So when you think about, and that was one of our questions, are there long lines? Or what is the wait? How do you address the volume? And like Dr. Contreras said, you do have heavy periods. And then you have other periods where it's slow. So setting up appointments and really establishing a, a structure where it's efficient, and you'll learn to do that. But creating that efficiency and creating those structures is something that Metro Nashville has seemingly done. And we're really interested in connecting with them to get that visual that you've.
I think there are quite a few in Maryland as well, which is pretty close to visit. I'm sure there are some in Virginia. You only spoke to four of the 77 council districts.
Correct. Thanks, I'll be, I'll look forward to learning more about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Slade. Yep.
Last but not least, we're going to share some human resource updates. Dr. Morrison assures us that she has more than four slides, but we'll go expeditiously through them.
It will be very quick, I promise you. Because this is something you know already.
Right, so just an update. I know staffing is at the forefront. We've talked about it in terms of construction. It's child nutrition, it's everywhere. But current state, 5,809 licensed employees, 3,625 classified employees, 9,434 employees. This snapshot is of our students. And I'd like you to keep this snapshot in mind as we look through the next several slides. But over the past 15 years, the enrollment of students in color in Guilford County has increased from 58.1 to 72, while the enrollment of white students has declined from 41.8 to 27.9. So as we think about staff that represents the students that we serve, that's important when we talk about teachers and hiring and principals and assistant principals. The employee demographics shown here by gender and by race show the breakdown of employees with 4,200 black employees and 4,522 white employees, 413 Hispanic employees, 141 Asian, 12 Pacific Islander, and 96 two-or-more races. Total of 3,005, oh, I'm sorry, that's, go ahead. The principal and assistant principal demographics are shown here, broken down by racial group and by gender.
Folks, it's important to.
You got it.
It's important to note here that our superintendent constantly reminds us that leadership is critical. And, you know, we've worked very hard through various efforts to ensure that our leadership in the diverse areas increases. And you, you note that from the totals, not only in male, female, but also in our Hispanic leadership numbers. We've done, we've increased this through efforts like our GALA program, which is our Guilford Aspiring Leaders Academy. We also have a partnership with High Point University as for a leadership program. And then our aspiring principal and assistant principal leadership academies within the district itself.
And the principal demographics are best outlined on Slide 70 that show 2015 to current state. So for an example, we had zero female Hispanic principals in 2015, and we now have two. We went from 57 African-American principals in 2015 to 68 in 2022. So this just breaks it down for each racial group, and it mirrors the students.
Yes, and most notable is Hispanic and African-American females is where the greatest increase has occurred.
The licensed employee demographics overall from 15 to 22 are shown here. You can see the breakdown, again, over that same seven-year span.
We often have to remind you that when we talk about licenses, it's not only our classroom teachers. We're talking about our counselors, our social workers, our media specialists. They all require, the state requires them to have a license in order to perform in the school setting. We've been able to increase these areas in this diversity, especially through things like our partnership with Teach for America. We have, I've actually had partnerships with three international agencies that have been approved by the State Department to, for us to employ teachers from other countries in our school district. And, you know, Jones Elementary School is a good example of where we employ a number of those teachers. They are allowed to stay with us for a period of five years, which helps our students to learn more about the world itself. We also work very hard with other agencies, I'm sorry, to increase those numbers, you know, by searching foreign wide. Our superintendent says to us all the time, don't do the same old things, because you're going to get the same old results. You know, let's expand our, our search for the outstanding teachers and teachers who are, you know, above and beyond, or those licensed employees above and beyond. Our students deserve that and more.
This shows the teachers that have three or more years of experience in blue and less than three years of experience in orange. This is something to celebrate, given where we are and where the rest of the nation is. You know, we're continuing to hire lots and lots of teachers, but we're also keeping them. Retirement eligibility outlined by job classification. You'll see bus drivers that are not eligible for retirement in blue and bus drivers who are eligible for retirement in orange. And that same pattern continues as you look at classified staff, school administrators, and teachers. You can see the highest number that are eligible for retirement are, in fact, our bus drivers.
And this is within the next five years. One of the things that we would note, though, about the bus driver side, many of our bus drivers are folks who've actually retired from other jobs and have come into the district. So that sometimes puts them in that, you know, higher group. and have come into the district. So that sometimes puts them in that, you know, higher group, uh, because they're, you've already been there. And actually, it also reinforces the fact that we have some dedicated folks that are willing to stick with us. If you think back to the side, previous slide, with that high percentage of employees who are, you know, in the, in the district are sticking in the district and been here three or more years.
Again, um, attrition rates, you can see a slight uptick, um, in most of those, um, in most of the districts there, when you look from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. Um, but this outlines where each is. Our through line is that solid blue line that shows the teacher attrition rate remaining relatively flat in a very complex time when thousands of teachers are leaving the position. So I think under Dr. Contreras's leadership and the will of the board to, um, if you'll remember, the recruitment and retention strategies, like the signing bonuses that are in the ESER plan, have mitigated some of what we could have seen when we look at other districts with teacher attrition. This slide shows, um, the licensed vacancies, the current state. Um, current licensed vacancies total two hundred and seventeen. You can see this in the areas of C T E, elementary teachers, E C teachers, exceptional children. Secondary math has always and continues to be a trouble spot, and secondary science teachers also. So this just shows the June nineteen vacancies up against the June two thousand twenty-two vacancies and, and what staff's working diligently on all day, every day to fill. Um, a few board meetings ago, you heard about the Math Teachers of Tomorrow program, where we're partnering with U N C G to make sure that we are providing tuition assistance, internship stipends, and mentorship to be able to grow our own and keep our own, um, math teachers. So just one of the strategies that we're trying to use to address, um, these issues.
Thank you, Winston.
Okay, I just wanna go back and make sure I'm understanding the attrition rate slide properly. So this shows that our attrition rate has dropped, so we're keeping more teachers than we used to.
We're keeping more-
Despite the narrative that persists that we're losing teachers in record numbers.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and ours is mirroring, I mean, obviously Cumberland County's is higher or lower than ours, I guess, is, no?
No, they're, they're, they're much higher. Yeah, much higher.
Sorry, much higher. So, I mean, it's a, it's a little lower in wake, but not dramatically, so.
Right.
Um, that's, I'm reading that correctly. Fewer teachers leaving.
You are reading that correctly.
People are even saying post-pandemic, they're leaving in droves, but it's not actually true.
That is right.
Huh?
You said that here.
I know, but it's, well, there's been a, there's been a teacher shortage growing over the past decade.
Exactly.
People are retiring. There's less entering. But this doesn't say that teachers are leaving Guilford County schools because they're unhappy or they're miserable or-
Correct.
I didn't mean there aren't teachers leaving.
Yeah, you are correct.
Eight percent of five thousand is a lot of people.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But it's a, it's a lower rate than it was in two thousand seventeen. And, yeah, I mean, in, in twenty, I don't know what it was prior to two thousand seventeen, but twenty- You know, yeah, I know, we're like five points.
Exactly.
That's a big, that's like a thirty percent change in maintaining teachers in the district. Okay, I was making sure, because it's so interesting how the data flies against some of the mythology and the narrative that takes-
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Um, the next slide is where my question resides. Um, it shows June two thousand twenty-two vacancies, a total of one forty-eight. But then total current licensed vacancies, two seventeen. What's the difference?
Well, the, the two seventeen is a total number vacancy, excuse me, we have it right now.
Licensed.
This slide, yeah, licensed. What this slide is, is showing is that we look at, there was five areas up there tend to be critical, not only in Guilford County, but throughout the nation.
So it's not inclusive of all areas, just the five?
The two seventeen is inclusive of all. The one forty-eight are critical, hard to fill vacancies.
Those five categories. One forty-eight equals those five categories. So of the two seventeen, one hundred and forty-eight of them fall in those categories.
And it's lower than it was in twenty nineteen before the pandemic.
Exactly, which is much less than it was. I, I think we were, well, we were trying to show you that, you know, even in two thousand nineteen, before the pandemic, you know, we had more vacancies at this point in the school year than we have presently. Um, Ms. Bellamy Small's always asking us, how hard are we working to hire people? So I wanna let her know we're, we're working hard in those five categories. Yes, ma'am, exactly. And the others are even, even less.
Thank you. Are you finished, Anita? Diane?
Um, have, have you looked at age? Because I, I understand that, uh, ability to retire and age are not necessarily, because somebody could, could start teaching at twenty-one and get their thirty years in at fifty. Is, is, have you looked at, at ages of our, I heard you say for the bus drivers, that, that is an, an older population. But, and, and part of the reason I ask is not just, you know, um, how young is our workforce?
Right.
But also the relevance of our workforce to the twenty-first century and teaching kids. Not saying that old folks don't relate to children, but at the same time, the younger generation is more connected to the younger generation. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking. I'm not gonna necessarily agree with you, but-
Okay. That's your prerogative.
We, we can, we can definitely look into, get information on the breakdown on the age categories for you.
Okay, be- because it, it, you know, depending on what your, what the age of your folks look like, like, in looking at this room, one, one of the things that has been interesting with Dr. Contreras's selection of her leadership is that she has people from different age groups. They're not, you know, they're not all the senior, and they're not the youngers either. That, you know, there's a mixture. And I think that that helps. And why are you laughing? And this is important. Oh.
Seniors, seniors, the no-no's.
Okay, the, 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 the point is, is that your mixture also helps in, in how you, how you grow, uh, what the vision is, okay? You, you can't have everybody that's sixty years old and not have somebody who's twenty years old. Like, I think the story somebody said about the young person who came in from U N C G.
Right.
Uh, who, you know, I mean, he's gonna be one of your young people. Um, so I, I just wonder, do we take that into account as we hire folk? Um, I know we can, there's no, I'm not talking about age discrimination. I'm just saying what our workforce looks like in terms of diversity of age, as well as sex, race, and those kinds of things.
Well, that's certainly important, but we're not allowed to look at age and say, we need, you know, five more fifty-five-year-olds.
I disagree with her.
Well, I'm not, but what I am just saying is that-
That's why I was cautious not to agree with you.
You know that you need a mixture.
Yes.
Yes.
Of, of, of wisdom.
That's right.
And, and I think that's reflected in our district. It's Bellamy Small. I don't have numbers here in front of us, but-
Yeah, well, if it's not legal for you to keep those, but still, I think it's somewhere in your, in your leadership.
Yes.
That still is something that you, that you look at.
We do look at the trend.
Because, because particularly with teach, with, with the teachers, again, in, in the fact that we, our kids are different. They're not like, you know, my kids were, or even that we were. We, you know, we, we just did what adults told us to do. Whereas these kids are participating in their education. I mean, I think we saw that during the pandemic. There were kids who were teaching the adults how to use technology. And so there's a give and take. And I think that helps to, um, give us a fuller, um, representation of what education is. Education is not a one-way street.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, that's all I was trying to ask. Okay, thank you.
You agree. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more questions.
So, um, this slide seventy-six is where we were. It just captures July twenty through June twenty-two new hires by month.
And that's all new hires, not just limited to, to classroom teachers. So you see that in, um, July of two thousand twenty, you know, five hundred plus or more. And then that seemed to have leveled out. And then again, in July of two thousand twenty-one, you see that great spike of August, great spike again. So it appears that even in the midst of pandemic, folks were kind of like, whoa, okay, this is not, this is a great profession. This is a place to be, a place to be.
So, um, in summary, just of each of the presentations, we talked about routing systems and transportation efficiencies. Um, we know during this transition, there's a lot of work to continue doing. Um, the expansion of the telehealth initiatives, there's lots of good work happening in that area. The implementation of the weapons body scanners across schools, the updates to the safety in terms of radio frequency, security cabling and cameras, the access to substance use prevention services, the Title IX office, including investigators, and expansion of training district-wide, continuing to look pilot visit at the, um, concept of centralized enrollment centers and, um, ongoing staffing recruitment expansion. And that concludes the transition report.
Thank you so much. And, um, we often, uh, sit and we praise all of the staff in the district for the outstanding work. But the chiefs very rarely get, um, their accolades for their leadership. And I just wanna say, I thank you so very much. It has been a pleasure and a joy working with all of you and seeing your commitment to making sure that students, uh, receive the education they need and deserve. Thank you for this presentation tonight and all of the work that all of you do every single day.
Thank you. Uh, Kim has a question.
Um, sorry, I, this is a good time to, you know, just say that I was looking for us maybe to talk about customer service. Being that you're talking about enrollment centers and the vision for that interaction. Um, you know, I've gone out to schools and been in the front office, and certain things were happening. So I do think we do need to consider improvement in training our people because perception of what is happening in the school, if I'm in, in the front desk and I hear a conversation that I should not hear at, in our front offices, or, so I do think that that's part of the growth.
It is. And we developed a whole customer service training plan and had a partner, um, in January of two thousand twenty. Um, it's not something you can do all of virtually, you know, just when you talk about types of training. So we have the plan packaged and ready to train and roll out. It's gonna take a while when we try, try, talk to getting to all of the front office staffs across all sectors. But you're right, and we've already developed the plan.
Diane?
Um, would it be helpful for us to at least see, um, a organization chart? Because so much has, has changed. Uh, I mean, even people. I mean, the, the folks that were here even two years ago, before the pandemic, it's like, poof, they're gone. So it, can we get some type of organizational chart, a, a new organizational chart? Because I think, uh, Dr. Contreras did one maybe in her second year with us, and now, and I think that's the last time I saw.
Yeah, we haven't done one in several years, but I think that's certainly something that, um, that we can give you the list of all staff and what divisions they're in of all, um, central office staff. And certainly, the new superintendent can present an organization chart to you. But to make sure you have all of the information you need and who's who in the departments, we can get you that listing and their contact information.
Okay, I, I wasn't exactly asking for that. I, I just, is it like, you, you've created a, a, a new office. I mean, just seeing what it looks from the superintendent level and then at the next level. And just, you know, so that we know what it looks like, what, what the structure looks like, that's, you know. So I, I wasn't asking for, you know, the listing of everybody. I was, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to Anita now. We are, um, thank you so much for those reports. Um, Anita, I'll turn to you for a motion.
I move we go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel and student matters protected by state law. Only personnel, okay.
All right, is there a second?
No, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're going into closed session, and we have some business when we come out.
Jill.
Jill.
Thank you. We're now back in open session. I'd like to turn to Board Member Bellamy Smalls.
I'd like to make a motion to amend personnel report for administrative performance for principal.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Dr. Contreras.
Thank you so much for your support. I'd like to appoint as the principal of Johnson Street Global Studies Meredith Boger. As the principal of Northeast Guilford Middle David Graves and the principal of Scale Greensboro Mr. Dwayne Lewis. Also the following transfers which were not subject to board vote but announcements are in order. Ms. Rachel Lewis from Scale Greensboro to the Academy at Smith. Nicholas Dixon from Faust Elementary to Hairston Middle. Kendrick Alston from Shady Brook Elementary to Faust Elementary. Abu Zaim to Shady Brook Elementary. Deanna Daniel from Rankin Elementary to Wellborn Middle. Stephanie Rakes from Vandelia Elementary to Rankin Elementary. Calandra Davis to Vandelia Elementary. Brian McCain from Nathaniel Green Elementary to McNear Elementary. Tokes Wall from Guilford eLearning Virtual Academy to Nathaniel Green Elementary. Chris Wheat from Johnson Street Global Studies to Northern Guilford Middle. Kimberly Jones Good from Sumner Elementary to Brown Summit Middle. And Lee Jones to be appointed as the district athletic director. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. We are now at action items, interim budget resolution. Ms. Henry.
You have to make a motion. It's action. Someone makes a motion.
Move the item.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Henry.
We are now at our last item this evening is a resolution focused on preserving the legacy of this board. At this time, we will consider a resolution authorizing our superintendent to ensure that the paper records of this board and other records of our district's history are digitized and properly maintained. The resolution promotes open and transparent access to the public and to protect historic artifacts for future generations. I would like to ask Board Vice Chair Winston McGregor to read the resolution.
Whereas the Guilford County Board of Education, the board is authorized and required by North Carolina General Statute 132.1-11 to maintain official records created in the transaction of public business. And whereas the board maintains records of its official actions dating back to 1872, including records of the first public schools in the state of North Carolina. And whereas the state of North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources provides for the permanent retention of these documents due to their great historical value. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 132-7 outlines the board's duty to keep records in safe places. Whereas the oldest of the board's official records are handwritten and beginning to deteriorate due to the age of the paper. And whereas the mission of the State Archives of North Carolina Division of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources is to keep and protect records with historical value in appropriate specialized settings and to image and digitize records to make official copies permanently available to the board and the public. And whereas the board is authorized by NCDNCR to fulfill its obligation to permanently maintain records through official copies produced by the State Archives. Whereas Guilford County Schools owns additional records of historical value, scrapbooks, and other artifacts that are of particular local interest. And whereas the Greensboro History Museum and the University of North Carolina at Greensboro house collections of local importance in specialized settings and collaborate to digitize and create web-based archives of historical memory.
Thank you. We're now back in open session. I'd like to turn to Board Member Bellamy Smalls.
I'd like to make a motion to amend personnel report for administrative performance for principal.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Dr. Contreras.
Thank you so much for your support. I'd like to appoint as the principal of Johnson Street Global Studies Meredith Boger. At the principal of Northeast Guilford Middle David Graves. And the principal of Scale Greensboro, Mr. Dwayne Lewis. Also, the following transfers, which were not subject to board vote, but announcements are in order. Ms. Rachel Lewis from Scale Greensboro to the Academy at Smith. Nicholas Dixon from Faust Elementary to Hairston Middle. Kendrick Alston from Shady Brook Elementary to Faust Elementary. Abu Zaim to Shady Brook Elementary. Deanna Daniel from Rankin Elementary to Wellborn Middle. Stephanie Rakes from Vandelia Elementary to Rankin Elementary. Calandra Davis to Vandelia Elementary. Brian McCain to, from Nathaniel Green Elementary to McNear Elementary. Tokes Wall from Guilford eLearning Virtual Academy to Nathaniel Green Elementary. Chris Wheat from Johnson Street Global Studies to Northern Guilford Middle. Kimberly Jones Good from Sumner Elementary to Brown Summit Middle. And Lee Jones to be appointed as the district athletic director. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. We are now at action items, interim budget resolution. Ms. Henry.
You have to make a motion. It's action. Someone makes a motion.
Move the item.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Henry. We are now at, our last item this evening is a resolution focused on preserving the legacy of this board. At this time, we will consider a resolution authorizing our superintendent to ensure that the paper records of this board and other records of our district's history are digitized and properly maintained. The resolution promotes open and transparent access to the public and to protect historic artifacts for future generations. I would like to ask Board Member, Board Vice Chair Winston McGregor to read the resolution.
Whereas the Guilford County Board of Education, the board is authorized and required by North Carolina General Statute 132.1-11 to maintain official records created in the transaction of public business. And whereas the board maintains records of its official actions dating back to 1872, including records of the first public schools in the state of North Carolina. And whereas the state of North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources provides for the permanent retention of these documents due to their great historical value. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 132-7 outlines the board's duty to keep records in safe places. Whereas the oldest of the board's official records are handwritten and beginning to deteriorate due to the age of the paper. And whereas the mission of the State Archives of North Carolina Division of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources is to keep and protect records with historical value in appropriate specialized settings and to image and digitize records to make official copies permanently available to the board and the public. And whereas the board is authorized by NCDNCR to fulfill its obligation to permanently maintain records through official copies produced by the State Archives. Whereas Guilford County Schools owns additional records of historical value, scrapbooks, and other artifacts that are of particular local interest. And whereas the Greensboro History Museum and the University of North Carolina at Greensboro house collections of local importance in specialized settings and collaborate to digitize and create web-based archives of historical materials. Now therefore be it resolved that the board authorize the superintendent Dr. Sharon Contreras to transfer the board's minutes to the State Archives in Raleigh to be imaged, digitized, and permanently maintained in a specialized setting to ensure the original documents are properly preserved and that other artifacts of historical value will be transferred to the Greensboro History Museum and/or UNCG to be digitized and permanently maintained. This is the 28th day of June 2022.
Is there a second, Anita?
Question, will the minutes still be accessible?
Digitally.
So we can access them?
Electronically.
Yeah.
But we, but the books will permanently go to the archive.
And I assume we are not going to be dealing with closed session minutes being?
No, no. These are the, these are from the 1800s, Joe. In nineteen, early 1900s, no. That, those books that are actually the paper when you touch the version.
I just want to make sure we differentiate between open and closed information. And some of the closed session minutes may be open by now. Who knows?
I noticed I didn't see any, as we reviewed these last weekend, we didn't see any closed session minutes.
It may be a relatively new concept in public meetings laws.
Okay.
And I am wondering at what point, you know, open, I mean, a closed session information is 50 years. You know, it all depending on what it is, it would be helpful.
The hardest area is personnel. Sometimes personnel would never be open depending on what it is. And so,
Okay.
You know, you'd hate to have to read and redact those very records.
Okay. All right. We are now at board comments.
We have to vote on the resolutions.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can just vote using your devices for the resolution. All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're now at board comments. Ms. Erby.
No, start with me. No comment. I'll see y'all later.
Okay, Linda. I mean, Winston.
Okay.
Oh. I'll miss you in the chair, Madam Superintendent. It's hard to believe it's the last board meeting. Dr. Oakley, we look forward to having you in the chair. And as, as usual, I just want to thank all of the staff and employees who, who you think are relaxing in the summer and they're not. They're working double time. I see evidence of it all the time. And I know we have our offices closed next week. I hope you enjoy a little bit of a break. I know it's busy hiring teachers. I want to say I really did appreciate the presentation and the reports this evening about what is in store during the transition. I think that's really helpful. And, you know, I went back and reviewed board bulletins recently. And, and there's been so much in those board bulletins that leads us to this point. And I think probably made natural progression for what needed to happen in these days and in the transition. And that is a sign of good leadership. When you all have been operating in plans and on a strategic plan and have had to adapt that. But there are natural things to flow from that that we'll be working on as we transition. And I know you'll be perhaps in and out a bit in July and August, still the superintendent until August 31st. There are 31 days in August, I think. So it's been a pleasure to serve here with you. I'll only be here a few months after you're gone. So.
Thank you.
I don't know. What can I say? I said it at the reception, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim?
Congratulations to everyone who was appointed tonight. We know that you're going to do really well in those new positions. Let's see. I had the opportunity to look at some yearbooks down at the office today at the student assignment. And I noticed in Dudley's yearbook, somebody was named the maid of honor. So when someone gets a chance, I would love to know what kind of tradition that was at Dudley where someone was named the maid of honor. That's, you know, you're talking about archives. I think those books are, just shared a lot of information about Guilf, Greensboro city schools, I believe. Because I didn't see any other schools. I only saw the directional schools and Grimsley and Dudley. And where all the yearbooks were gathered at the student assignment office. And I don't know if that's a tradition where everyone sends you, send you a copy of their yearbook or they just happen to be there at the student assignment office. But maybe that's something that we could do here as well. But congratulations again to everyone who was appointed and staff. You do outstanding work. The presentations tonight were wonderful. And Dr. Contreras, you definitely will be missed. But congratulations to your next, you know, endeavor. I'm sure you're going to do great things and they're very fortunate to have you. And you definitely will be hard to replace.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Betty. Good evening. I will first start off by thanking Dr. Contreras for her time here. Even though I didn't spend the whole six years with you on the board, but I was with you for two years. But I was here when you came and met you at
The first day.
The very first day. It's something we will never forget. Thank all the students, middle school and high school students who came out to the bridging the gaps with life skill training withheld at Hairston. We had a phenomenal time. Thank you so much for attending. My concern going into the next school year, definitely be the increase in free reduced lunch applications. Also making sure that students attend school on a regular basis. And I would say the suspension program. So those things I think I'm going to try to tackle along with my colleagues. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for all you do. The presentation today was phenomenal. I think each one of you all have a great restful time next week. Thank you.
Okay. First, one more shout out to Leah Carper, our Teacher of the Year, who is now featured in a National Geographic webinar and a book about virtual learning during the pandemic. And who is now sporting a nice new shiny Ford from the Borough's Welcome Fund. So as she goes to talk everywhere, she can do it in style. She earned it. Dr. Contreras, you and I really only got to know a lot about each other's past in the last few months and how similar a lot of it was. Little history. When I was 14, a cross stitch sampler, I think is the right thing, and y'all, I don't cross stitch, okay? Popped up in my house and all it said was, women should remain silent. I'm sure you probably know the rest of that one. But that was all that was on that was women should remain silent. So that 14-year-old girl was silent while she was hungry, when she was assaulted, when she was packing up around the fifth of every month because the bank was coming to get the house, when she was working 40 hours a week at 16, and didn't find a voice until her first daughter was born and realized how wrong that was. And what a difference it would make for my own child to know, to never be silent. So my ask of you, as you leave us, is to keep screaming. Scream, girl. Kick, bang, beat, because somewhere out there is a girl growing up like we did that needs to know that there are times in life you should never be silent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane?
Dr. Contreras, I got some choice words for you. Brilliant, brave, visionary, practical, fighter, advocate, educated educator, leader, proud, productive, demanding, determined, creative, data-driven, resilient, and sometimes humorous. Thank you on behalf of the students, the families, the employees, and the community. I don't think we really understand what brilliance looks like because a lot of times we're pushing against it. But to see this woman who let us know that she was all female, all African, Latino, disabled, all of those things, but also the best educator we could have picked for the school system. She didn't let those other titles keep her from pushing back against her board, pushing back against this community sometimes, and getting what we needed for Guilford County Schools. I hope that in our own ways, and we didn't always agree about everything, but that's okay. We're not supposed to. That's why we challenge each other to give our best. And so she gave her best, and I think she would say in some ways this board challenged her to fight harder, to prove that what she knew, what she saw in the data, what she believed in her heart was worth fighting for. And I can't say the word, but you know, there's nothing wrong with raising heck if that's what you have to do. And she's done that. So I'm going to miss you because I feel like that though you were a northerner, you got the South. And you tried to work with what the South represents to us. Are we there yet? No. Will we get there in my lifetime? I don't think so. But we keep pushing for it. We keep fighting for it. And you have been an example of what that means and what we can get when we fight and when we push. And we encourage people to join us for the benefit of the next generation. Going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Well, Dr. Contreras, I've missed both your little parties, so I better make this really good. You know, I, we met, obviously, I was newly elected. I think you were already, had already been the superintendent for a short time. And I remember we first met for coffee there off Battleground. And one thing that I tell people, we disagreed a lot and on many, many things. But one thing I've always said, and I, and I believe this and it's true, is how visionary you are as an executive. And that's, I think, you know, there is some, there's an administrator that's done it for a long time. I had thoughts about that and curiosities about vision and big picture thinking. And, and early on, it was illustrated with how you were able to marshal a lot of different resources. I mean, using things like, you know, leveraging the Chamber of Commerce and building coalitions around, for example, the CTE program for one. And there are many, and I won't go into all of those. But I learned how to question my own views about what's best for kids because there are a lot of great ideas and we can arrive at a lot of great solutions. So I learned a lot about pushing myself and going beyond my own, you know, perceptions and fences that I had put up. And I think many board members, we're elected, we, we know what we're doing and we can figure all this out. But you taught me a lot about vision and, and not only the vision, but how to bring a lot of disparate groups together to get that done. And, and, and a lot of times that's messy and a lot of times that's, can be thorny and, you know, days where we don't talk a lot because maybe something was upsetting. But never any hard feelings and it was always very professional and I learned an awful lot. So thank you for that. And I know that you, another thing you taught us is you've got more to give. You know, you're never, there's no finish line. And I always appreciate that. We tell our kids that in school and as we raise them. You've got more to give. You know, when you think you've reached a finish line, you got to keep, keep going. So for that, you should be commended. So I'll just leave you with a little Irish blessing. So may the road rise up to meet you. May the wind always be at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. And in twing it again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. Thank you.
And I won't say much. I'll say what I said at Hairston at the community reception about how unapologetic you are about the things that you believe in and that are important, and that's the children and expectations and injustice and equity. And you represent so much. I think it was at the reception that a couple of us were showing you the different names we have for you on our phones. You know, I don't know what y'all call her, but we all, we all got it. Yeah, it was just really, it was so funny because everybody has a name for her in their phone. And, and it's, it's endearing. And I apologize because you've been so underappreciated. I mean, you know, it is amazing, the lowest learning loss, the retention, the things that we've seen that have been incredibly challenging in the last 48 months alone. And so to have, you know, continue to push through and, and challenge things and take things on when other people may have just stepped back a minute is just incredibly admirable. And so I've especially appreciated the time that you and I've been able to spend together, especially being in this position and working together. And I'm excited that you're going to be here. I'm sorry that we are losing you and I am committed to maintaining the things that you've done just tonight alone to digitize that material. I remember sitting with Nora Carr over in the print shop. I could not believe that these manuals in these books are in a file cabinet, I mean, just exposed, not protected in any way, going back. And, and I remember the faith leaders, the black pastors coming to the school board and asking for money for Sedalia or the Negro teacher salaries or it's, it's, it is painful and, and just unbelievable what's in those minutes. And it was just sitting there. And I think we had a conversation about it then. It was all kind of reasons about, you know, who, how long it would take and how much it would cost. And so you just don't let those things get in your way. You figure out how to do what needs to be done in spite of all of the roadblocks and barriers. So I just want to say thank you for, from me, and thank you from a community that has been texting me and emailing me and sending pictures with T-shirts and posters and videos from children and from adults saying how much they love and appreciate you. So we are all the better for having you here. So thank you. Diane?
Dr. Contreras, can I ask you to say your kind of theme phrase for us one last time?
Yes, yes. I was getting ready to. Okay. So I just want to thank all of you as board members. You're in a position where you are so unappreciated for the work you do and the contributions that you make. And I have just enjoyed. I promised I wouldn't cry again. I've enjoyed every moment serving these students and the families. And I'm so grateful to the Guilford County community for just always being supportive. I think tornadoes, school supply. There is nothing I have asked that this community hasn't come through on and that this board hasn't come through on. And I ask that we just keep fighting for kids. I'll still be right here in Greensboro. And it's so funny you said that, Deborah, because yesterday during our superintendent's Women in Education Tea, I quoted Audrey Lord, and I quote this to everyone. She said, "My silence has never helped me. It will never help you." So we have to keep speaking and doing the right thing for children. And I have something for Dr. Oakley before I leave. So 11 years ago, when I became a superintendent, someone visited Israel and gave me a smooth stone from the Valley of Eli. And this is for you, for, to make sure that you know you can slay any giant that comes in your way. And I want you all to know, it is a great day to be an educator. It will always be a great day to be an educator. Can you please remove my name?
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Contreras. All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Good night. Thank you. All right, good night. Thank you.